Welcome to the last Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for the year of 2019. This is December 23rd. Thanks for coming if you're here or watching and throughout the year, and may everybody have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and Happy Holidays. So join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So as I said, this was the last meeting of the year. It's also the last meeting where I'll be the chairman as we rotate the chairmanship each year. Commissioner Adair will be the chairman next year, and Commissioner DeBoe will be the vice chair. So kind of in keeping with tradition. I want to make a couple of comments because it is my last meeting as chair. First, I want to appreciate the opportunity to be the chair and be involved in a little bit different way as a chair than you are as a, just as a sitting commissioner, I've learned. I was really glad, one of the things that I wanted to do this year was get more engaged in the agenda setting. I believe this is our meeting, it's Commissioners' meeting, and I think it's important that the chair be involved in sitting down with the leadership team and kind of getting that out, and it's been Sharon, our Executive Assistant, most of the year doing that, and I think that's worked well. I hope it's given, I think it's important, but I also, I hope it's given you both a chance. My other vision was if any of the Commissioners have something they want to have on the agenda, I think it's important that the chair be receptive of that. I also have tried to involve people in the meetings. Anytime they want to involve, it's kind of interesting because I tend to want to say my, blurt out my part, so that's been a challenge, but I hope that continues if it can. I want to thank Sharon, who's not here today, but she's already on vacation, but she's done a great job with minutes. Laura's also filled in on many of our committee, or Commissioner meetings, and then Tom and Dave are our leadership team, also with regard to setting the agendas, and so we meet every Thursday or Friday to do that, and that's been great working with both of you and doing that, so I appreciate that. So I think that's all my, all my comments on the chair position. We do have a time now for citizen input. If there's anybody who wants to say anything that's not on the agenda, or about anything that's not on the agenda, this would be the time to do that. I don't see anyone, is anyone here that wants to do that? Okay. So that means we'll move on to our action items. We've got a fairly full agenda today, some interesting things, and our first item is, well, oh no, excuse me, we do have one matter on consent agenda.
I move we accept our consent agenda today, December 23rd, 2019.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further comments? These are some letters of appointment to a committee, or to the Road District. Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBoe?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Now we'll move on to the action items. The first one is a recommendation, consideration recommendation to the Oregon Geographic Names Board of naming of Prowl Springs, and Tom's going to present that, and then you are?
Patrick Griffiths.
Okay, Patrick, thank you for coming.
Commissioners, thank you. Commissioner Henderson and I received a note recently from the Oregon Geographic Names Board about a request that was initiated by the City of Bend to name the springs that are above Tumalo Falls, the source of the City of Bend water supply, and within the watershed up there, and we thought it would be a good idea to invite the city over to kind of provide some of the background on Roger Prowl, who the springs are proposed to be named after, so you have a little bit of that context. The Oregon Geographic Names Board won't meet on this until next summer, but they asked for the county's input, since it's within our borders, within our jurisdiction, prior to them taking up the official discussion of the naming next summer. So I guess with that, I will turn it over to, yes, Patrick Griffiths from the City of Bend. There's a couple of other representatives here also, in case there are any other questions. You have a lovely picture of the springs right here in front of you to see, put it in context. So, Patrick.
Thank you, Tom. Chair, Commissioners, thank you again. I know two of you, I haven't met Commissioner Adair yet, I'm welcome, I'm happy to be here today. I'm Patrick Griffiths, I'm the Water Resources Manager for the City of Bend for the last 20 years, and with me I have Wendy Eddy, who's our Stormwater Program Manager, and Spencer Cashwell. They have worked tirelessly to get this application in and all the work that goes with it, but I'm here today to give you a little bit of background on the springs, a little bit of background on Roger, Roger to help you tie these pictures together a little bit. Some history. Imagine if you were the City of Bend's water manager in 1923. At that time, it was a private water company called Bend Water Power and Light, and your source of water was the Deschutes River. Imagine then getting a letter from the State Health Board saying that your water was unfit for human consumption. Well, that actually happened in 1923, and Bend Water Power and Light started a cavalcade of actions that essentially led to the City of Bend purchasing that private water system and taking over the quest for a new high-quality water supply, which you're looking at here in this picture. I did get my feet wet taking this picture back in the day. Essentially, these springs come out at 6,300 feet in the cascades, and essentially provide us our base water supply for the City of Bend and have since 1926. So when we took it over, we actually worked with the Forest Service and created what's known as the Bend Municipal Watershed. That watershed has been in place and managed by the Forest Service in conjunction with the city since 1926, and that agreement was signed. Today, we have about 30,000 water connections using that supply, including this building, so you've benefited from that secure, pure source that comes to us by gravity. But I want to remind the Commissioners and the public that this high-quality drinking water doesn't just happen on its own, and this is where Roger Prowl's story comes in. Roger was hired shortly after the Bridge Creek fire in 1979. He became the water quality supervisor, and they were really working hard to understand when that Bridge Creek fire happened, it actually burned into the watershed a little bit and created some sedimentation and turbidity issues, and it really threatened that high-quality surface water supply. And so Roger took it upon himself to become educated about how to protect drinking water and work on the water quality rules that the state and the federal government promulgated, and essentially made it his life's mission to protect our surface water for the entire time he was there. So for the next 24 years as a City of Bend supervisor, he did just that, but he did a lot more. Let me just read a couple of things. It's in a very thorough packet that Wendy and Spencer put together, but essentially, he reestablished the boundary around the watershed. He worked tirelessly on Fire Watch and related programs to protect that watershed. He set up water testing protocols and helped the city navigate that increasingly stringent drinking water regulations that are in place today. He set up internal water quality training programs for not only the City of Bend employees, but statewide, and those training classes really touched hundreds and hundreds of certified water operators across the state. That's how committed Roger was to his work. He also lent his expertise to neighboring cities all over central Oregon, as well as the private water purveyors, and many in times of crisis, and really helped protect our public health through that work. He testified repeatedly on state and local issues on water, and became an expert on water rights and all of the other pieces of water supply. The favorite saying that we like to repeat is every day he protected water for the grannies and the babies. So it's really a neat thing. I was hired, I invited him to come to my classroom. I was a middle school science teacher back in the early 90s, and he came to my classroom as a city employee, and we established a relationship, and shortly after that, I returned to graduate school and devoted my career to water and water supply, and he was a big inspiration for that. One of the things that he did, and the legacy that I think he left towards, towards all of us, was these tours and hikes in the watershed, and every year he would take agency professionals and others, including teachers like myself, to the springs, and it really was a magical spot, and you could just see Roger come alive there. One of the things we learned shortly before he passed from Lou Gehrig's disease was there was no name to these springs. They had always been the unnamed Source Springs, and so we thought collectively, what a fitting tribute to somebody who dedicated his life to this, and this was a fitting tribute that again goes through this bureaucratic process of the Names Board, but we thought, let's do the work, let's see if we can do that. We brought it to City Council in 2013, and they voted unanimously in support, and here we are today in front of the County Commission. Again, thank you guys for hearing this issue today, and we hope you can be supportive of this effort as well. I will offer that if any of you want a tour of the Source Springs, I'd be happy to continue Roger's legacy and invite you along. We usually do it in the fall, and I'll be in touch with Tom when those dates get set for next year. So again, if there's any questions, we're able to answer them, but thank you again for your time.
All right. Well, thanks for coming, all three of you, today. Interesting story. I think if we, if we go forward with this, I hope you'll write that story up so it's somewhere that people can read it, because I don't think most people know the history. How long did Mr. Prowl work as the water quality person?
He worked for the city for 24 years. He then, in 2008, he went to the Chenoweth Water District where he continued his commitment to water supply up near the Dalles, and trained more people and educated more folks about the importance of drinking water and water quality protection, and so he did that until literally the day he died. He was committed to water supply. So he passed away in 2014.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Does he have family still in the area?
He does. Susan Prow would have loved to be here today. It was a little bit short notice. She's over bouncing her grandbaby in Portland with her two sons.
Priorities.
Yep, absolutely, and so she's in Portland today doing that, and we send her our best. We told her this was going on, and she is sad she's not here, but she knows we do a good job, so. She sends her regards.
Comment, Commissioner Adair?
I just, you know, it's a wonderful story, and it tells us the history. In the article, it said that this contributes 50%. Where is the other 50% of the water supply come from?
Rest of the water supply comes from our regional groundwater aquifer, and so that aquifer is all under us here. It flows through Bend, but it all is, basically the recharge area is the same high cascades that the springs come. Think of those as the higher springs that come out a little bit earlier, and then the rest come down here, pass under us, and most of that water then surfaces around Lake Billashinook.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And you've, I know I've heard before the number of wells that the rest of this comes out of the, how many wells does the city have?
Yeah, so we have about eight well sites. I think we have over 20 wells today that are producing water, and those help meet our extra supply we need at the peak summer season to meet all the needs of irrigation and business here as well.
So there's a, was this published in the newspaper, something, naming it for Prowl Springs? There's attachment here. It tells a little bit of that story.
Yes.
Which is a wonderful opportunity. So this, this plus surface water is probably what Bridge Creek is made up of.
That's right.
Yeah, so this is, the springs is a natural-flowing supply, so I know the Bridge Creek, the pipe coming down, and now there's the outback facility there, so a lot, a lot of history there. I got to sign that first section as they put it in the ground up there with the City Council years ago, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, long history of that water supply, and it's a wonderful water supply, you know, tests well, and yeah.
It's award-winning. I think it's one of the reasons we have so many distilleries and brewers in town, and people love it, and we have won awards and awards for the best tasting water for Bend, so we're very proud of the supply, and I think we're all standing collectively on Roger's shoulders for that.
Absolutely. Well, and the gravity opportunity of it, too.
Absolutely.
Because pulling it up out of the ground is different than having it come down from above, so.
That's absolutely.
Yeah, great history. Thank you for sharing that. The opportunity we have here is to document, kind of explain the history, put it on the book, so when someday somebody kind of wants to learn about the history of it, another 50 or 100 years from now, there's something to read, so I think that's the value of this effort right now.
Absolutely right, and I will take that to heart, Chair Henderson. I think I am the documented historian of the Water Division, and I have a lot of notes, and I'm putting it all together. We have some great web pages now. You can go online and see our watershed page, and most of this is going to be documented. We're going to put a little special section. We were going to let this process play out a little bit, but we definitely intend to document this and teach our kids about it and keep that tradition alive, so.
So for this process, is it a letter of support or a vote of the Commission, or yeah, what's the?
Commissioner, it's not actually all that formal.
Yeah, okay.
All they're looking for is a response from likely Commissioner Henderson that went, the email went to, so probably something like a minutes motion, voicing the board's support for the naming, and then I'll work with, with Phil to respond directly to the Geographic Names Board.
So yeah, I'll move to support the naming process for Prowl Springs in, in support of Roger Prowl and his, his great service to the community over the years.
And I'll second the motion, and it's really too bad that it took this long, honestly. You know, 24 years devoting your life to the system is outstanding, so I hope Susan will be present when it's So I hope Susan will be present when it happens.
Perfect. Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Well, thank you. Thanks for reminding us and bringing this to us. Thank you.
I wanted to add tour. That sounds like a...
That'd be, yeah, that does sound fun.
Yeah, invitation.
Okay, so our next item, number three, is a consideration of Chair's signature document, 2019-853 Notice of Intent to Award Letter of Adult Parole and Probation Works Center Remodel and Expansion.
Morning.
Morning.
Lee Randall, Facilities Director. So you have before you this morning the Notice of Intent to Award Letter for Construction Manager, General Contractor for the Adult Parole and Probation Works Center Remodel and Expansion. I just thought I would comment a bit about the process and then be available for any questions that the board may have. It was a public advertised request for proposals. We had three contractors who participated in the mandatory site visit, and two contractors provided written proposals. The selection committee consisted of five members. One from parole and probation, one from the sheriff's office, one from the legal department, one from the facilities department, and then a member from the architectural team. The scoring was of primarily two items. The RFP proposal response, which was a formal packet that we received from the responding contractors, and then also of an interview. The various questions related directly to the request for proposals and the information that was solicited from the contractors. The CMGC contract would be with Soskanska USA Building, scored the highest of the responding contractors through the process. And I provided a summary of those scoring sheets in the agenda packet. The CMGC contract would be for pre-construction services for $46,665. That allows for early contractor input in the continuing process, which includes constructibility analysis, cost estimating, site logistics review, review of alternate construction methods, value engineering, document review, and the obtaining of permits as the process goes forward. It's not the final construction document or construction contract that would be created by amendment to the contract that would result from the Notice of Intent to Award. And that would be created at a later date. Going forward, we have, you know, a series of opportunities for board input and continued board decision. Those would be as we move forward with the concept. In January, we plan to return to the board with additional information on the concepts we've reviewed so far and to get additional board input and to hear what other opportunities we might have for the project. And then we would also have board input throughout the design process once the board has selected a concept. That would result in a negotiated guaranteed maximum price, and that contract amendment would then come before the board for approval, at which point the actual construction project would move forward. Any questions?
So one question I have is, so if we were awarding this initial contract to Soskanska, are they then guaranteed to be the ones that do the work?
So they're, the, I wouldn't say guaranteed, and Dave, you could speak up to this, because they would be selected for the project going forward, but there are a series of decision points for the board. So this is not the final opportunity for the board.
But it seems like our major decision points are going to be about design and do we agree with the cost, not do we agree with the contractor? Because typically, in this format, the person that does the value engineering and help at this point ends up doing the work. I mean, that's the idea, right?
Right.
Okay, so I want to make sure of that. And then...
But that is conditional. Obviously, there will be additional contracts
Right.
for additional work. If you, if the board were to continue with the CMGC process and issuing this Notice of Intent, then Soskanska would be that contractor for that. But that's still contingent upon coming to contract terms on whatever additional services.
But the intention now is not to bid out the work. I mean, there's not going to be an open or a closed.
That's what this process assumes, yes. There would be negotiations, though,
Yeah.
between staff and Soskanska.
And assume we're selecting our partner at this point in time for the process, unless it doesn't go well.
So my concern, just with this, I voiced a little bit at the meeting, the work session we had, is I thought, you know, I'm anxious to see what design you've come up with in January. I'm going to support this because I like the letter from, I guess it was your, maybe it was your memo about the process, and I'm counting on that to look at the design in January, get their input. But I was concerned with spending five or six million for only 10,000 square feet. And so I don't see this as just trying to shave 100 here and 100 there, 100,000 here and there. I see it as more significant than that. So I'm hoping that, I don't know much about Soskanska, actually. I know they've been working this market for a long time, and they're a large company. But I just hope they understand that would be a good objective to try to reach, at least from my perspective, on cost, because at the, I think we were close to 6 million for 10,000 feet. So that was about $600 a foot, which is, to me, is very expensive. Comments?
So, you know, to get that, I'm not a builder, and I don't have that experience. But my point is, you know, my experience from what I've learned, you know, kind of the residential is different than commercial construction techniques, kind of the structure and the finishes. So, I mean, I would be willing to learn about that, you know. If we want to have a little work session about where those big costs end up adding, adding to the cost of a project like this. So, you know, because we would always be supportive of, let's build it for less. But yeah, where are those design choices and the structural materials and all that?
Okay, my question is, who was the third general contractor that did not submit?
Calcon Construction.
Calcon, and they, do you know, they're doing a lot of things for us. Do you know why they didn't submit?
I don't know specifically. I would have to touch base with them. My recollection is that timing is always a challenge. So there perhaps were other projects coming online, and they would have had other considerations, I'm sure. But oftentimes, timing is a big component of whether or not they decide to submit.
Okay. Well, I know when you took me to the top of the Courtney Building that morning in the snow, sort of, I guess it was snowing, the four, you know, level stairway.
Yes.
Out in the middle of nowhere, next to the building, I guess it was.
I was very impressed with how you negotiated that.
Oh, yeah, I was.
Commissioner Dare, it wasn't that bad. I went up at two.
Hey, I ride horses 40 miles an hour.
Just for the record, the lengths that commissioners go to.
Yep.
Yes. But no, to see all those copper pipes and all the work that was being done there, you know, and the fact that they had to build that room into the, you know, the attic and, you know, all the complexities, I think always having us actually see things is so helpful and working with you. And you know, as I told you that day, I want this cost to be down. And, but I know contractors are really capable of, you know, making it just as good, but maybe making it a little bit more respectful of taxpayer money.
And to Commissioners Henderson's point, this does allow for substantive input from the contractor on actual design, constructibility, materials that are used. And so if the board supports bringing them onboard at this point, it allows for that kind of input, which is invaluable.
And this is a model that, to your point about the difference between residential and commercial, that's true. And, but this model is very common in the custom home project, where you help with the design, you help with the cost savings, and then you get to build it too. So that model, I'm, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that's where we were. I thought it was, so.
And I just think of, you know, a two-story steel infrastructure with stone, you know, up the side is different than tipping up, you know, two-by-four, two-by-six walls. So I'm just, I think there's just some big level changes in the costs at that point. And it's not my domain. I'm just, Tom has.
Any other questions? Or Tom?
Yeah, I just, Commissioners, I appreciate the discussion, but, you know, unlike many projects where you have kind of a set concept going in and you hire the CMGC to help refine the cost and finalize the design for that, in this case, we, there are several different concepts because of complicating factors involving the second floor and even the underground canal there that the CMGC will help us refine those different concepts for the board to, you know, have accurate and complete information in order to zero in first on a concept before then we get into the detailed.
Well, and to that, the thing I was, you know, the thing we have to do is create a new space for the people who are dislodging from the, what's going to become the stabilization center. But this is more than that. And so what I haven't really seen is the need for the remodel of, that parole and probation wants. But that's been the thing that hopefully we'll get to in January and see. I mean, I'm sure there'll be, every space is more useful if you redesign, I mean, there's ways to redesign spaces, and that's what they're looking for in the existing, I think. But I haven't really understood what they're, what they're trying to do, you know, exactly. So that'll be, but that's for the future, I agree, so, yeah.
So I move for Chair's signature of document number 2019-853 and Notice of Intent to Award the Letter for the Adult Parole and Probation Works Center Remodel and Expansion.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Any further comments? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
So just a quick thank you to the parole and probation staff for being displaced for this time of transition. So we'll all work together on that, and I'd like to come see those facilities here sometime in the near future, too.
And are they, are they dislodged currently, or are they still in the...
They are, yeah. We started moving last week, and construction, the contractor officially takes over the programs building today. And so, and I'll reiterate that the PMP staff have been outstanding and flexible in helping to bring the stabilization center onboard.
You know, it'd be interesting if you could get some pictures of this early demolition and then the building, because this has been a real public, this stabilization center's been real public. It'd be good to be able to show those at later time.
I can get that information and have it as an update to the board this week.
And you noticed the date is now April 15. And I told, I emailed Lee back, and I said, oh, that's not my favorite day.
I think we can adjust by a day or two.
April 15?
Yeah. Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you.
Merry Christmas.
So the next item on the agenda, number four, is the treasure and finance report. This is our monthly review, kind of where we are financially throughout the county departments and, so.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning. I have two items, so I guess we'll start with the finance report. And if you refer to page 27 in your packet, 4A 27, I'll just run you through a summary again, like I have in the past, and point out any highlights I think you need to know. Feel free to stop me along the way. So I'll get started. Down below in the graphical section there, you'll notice in the upper left, the portfolio breakdown, you'll see that our balance in the portfolio at the end of November was 200, just short of $241 million. And that is an increase of about $15 million from last month and $18 million from a year ago. So the portfolio's on the rise a little bit, which we would expect. If you look in the middle column there and follow, you see the $87.5 million number on the line that says LGIP. The LGIP limit with the state is $50.4 million. That's the amount that they limit local governments to investing in. You'll notice that we're at $87.5 million, which is significantly more than that limit. The state allows some flexibility in terms of tax revenue influx that comes into the pool and gives us some time to actually work those down and push those off into other investments. So you'll see by this time next, or the next report, that that'll be underneath that limit of $50.4 million. So I just want to point that out to you. If you slide to the right and look at the investment income box, our income, our net income, investment income, was $431,000 last month. This is $104,000 more than the previous month, which you would expect given the influx of tax revenue, and $27,000 more than last November. Let's see here. We talked about, let's go down to the yield percentages, which is sliding down the right side. You'll see that our local government investment pool, FIB/LGIP, the current rate of, the current rate that they're paying us now is two and a quarter, 2.25%. And this is down from 2.45%. So it's down 20 basis points. And just to give you some context in what that actually means in terms of dollars, on a $50 million pool, 20 basis points over the course of the year is equivalent to $100,000. So it's a sizable piece of money when it just moves by 20 basis points.
We don't usually see it move that much in a point in time, I mean, relative to whatever. But I mean, usually it's about a tenth and not two times that.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll see what happens in the future, but I wouldn't be surprised if that drops.
See, for the last three years, we've been excited it's been moving up.
Yeah.
So this is kind of reversing, but...
It's always good to look back at history and have a context from where you came from. There were years when it was 45 basis points and 52 basis points. It was just low for years and years. And I remember when it went over 1%, I thought we'd, we were, we had it made. But again, that's coming down. It was well over 5% back in 2006.
Yeah, a dozen years ago.
Yep. Okay, the average return on the pool is 2.48%, slightly down. And again, I would, I would say that we should expect to see that as our, some of our securities that were purchased at a higher level, a higher return, are maturing and we're reinvesting in lower amounts. In the middle column there, middle, center mill, or center, at the bottom, the weighted average maturity. Last month, our weighted average, or our maximum maturity was 3.7 years. We're down to 3.62, tightening up that a little bit. We're investing typically in two years or less, I should say, around two years. And our, the weighted average has dropped from 0.63 years to 0.62. So again, a little bit, a little bit shorter. The one last data point that I'd point out here is on the box, lower right box, one up from the bottom, our under-one-year maturity policy is 25, at 25%. We're actually at 72%, so we're keeping much more within a year than policy requires. And that 72.5% is down from 75.9% last month. Any questions on that? All right, flip the page, and a couple of graphs that I'd like to show you. The one at the top is the historic returns. And again, we're seeing, as I mentioned last month, if you look at that red, that red line, you can see it's sort of stabilized, and it's around 1.6%. That's the maturity, the average yield to maturity on a two-year treasury note. And that is sort of the bellwether, how we compare other potential investments. So 1.6%, we're at 2.48%, that's the blue line, and then the corporate line's up above that. Three-year portfolio balance is continuing along with the same pattern it has over the last several years.
Were you able to do that back further in time, like we talked about last month?
Yeah, that was actually in last year's, or last year's, it was in last month's report.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it looks, I don't think you were there. You weren't there last month.
I don't think, I think that was, I don't think it was either.
It was in last month's report, so it looks similar to this, except it's just stretched out. Has the same pattern.
Just get a copy of that.
But it is going up.
It is going up.
Yes, it just keeps going up.
Well, the peak goes up, and the bottom keeps, you know, going up. The lowest amount of money that we have during a year has gone from, it looks like about 135 to close to 180 or something, so.
Like the peak of August 19 is about the high of October 17, it looks like.
Mm-hmm.
Isn't that what's happened?
Can you say that one more time?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, the peak of August 19 looks like the same point of August, the low in August, the high of October of 17. Is that?
Right.
I mean, it looks like...
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Mm-hmm.
Like, okay, what used to be our, what was our low this year was actually the high two years ago.
And one of the things that I just asked this morning is to, is to start looking at these portfolio balances in terms of what drives portfolio balance. And one of the things that I, I just asked this morning is to, is to start looking at these portfolio balances in terms of what drives portfolio balances. So one is going to be obviously, um, population. There's a relationship between population and money, of course. But the other is also, what other new programs have we taken on over the last X number of years that would influence that, that balance? New, new programs that are new to the county that aren't existing programs that have tied to population. So, uh, we're going to do that analysis and I'll get back to you on that one.
Yeah, I mean, it's a variety of things. Like even general, the general fund, uh, property tax revenues have gone from the high teens to the high twenties in a few years. So, I mean, that's just on the automatic three percent increased assessment.
Yeah. And, and where I'm going with this is I'd like to be able to explain the why behind that growth over those, that period.
Well, and, and what's at risk. I mean, what, the ones that, some of these are decisions by the federal government and the state government to fund things that can go, came and they could go away. So as well, you know, local, but like our road taxes, good. Okay. Next.
Okay, on to the investments page, page twenty-nine. You'll see at the very bottom of the fourth column from the right-hand side, the two hundred and forty million dollar, that's the balance of the portfolio, which includes not only the securities we're invested in, but also the local government investment pool and the cash we have on hand at First Interstate Bank. In, uh, November, you can see we made several purchases. Those are in the light blue. And you'll notice that the return, the yield to maturity on those, which is the fifth column from the light right, I think, one, two, three, four, five, yep, is somewhere between one seven, one eight. And I think the high was two point one two down towards the bottom. And again, I, I said this before, but this is demonstrating why our average yield to maturity is going to continue to slightly decline because we're selling or, or securities that we're able to invest in a year ago, we're paying over three percent and now we're well under two percent. Okay. Now, on to page thirty. This is the exciting part. So back when I started, I talked to my staff and I said, we need to find a better way to explain what's going on with our financials, because we're so diversified, it's real tough to do that, in a quick snapshot. We want to dash, be able to put a dashboard up that we can look at some pictures and within thirty seconds have a general idea of what's going on with our financials. So that's what this is. What you're looking at here is the general fund. And you can see that over in the left-hand side, we have all access to any fund in the county, but this is just the general fund. So I'm going to walk you through this. Uh, starting from left to right, you'll see our budget to actual section, the requirements. We've spent fourteen point five million. That's the yellow, uh, speedometer, I guess we want to call that, yellow speedometer. Fourteen point five million of our budget out of thirty-seven point five million. So we spent thirty, almost thirty-nine percent of our budget compared to year-to-date of forty-two percent. Excuse me. On the resource side, because it's a general fund, we, our revenues are really low until November and then they spike. So you'll see we've received thirty-one million of a thirty-six million dollar revenue budget. So about eighty-six percent of the revenues come in. And then the beginning working capital, we're at a hundred and eleven percent of what we had budgeted, twelve point three million in actual beginning working capital on eleven point one million dollar original budget estimate. If you keep sliding to the right, it breaks it down a little bit more, more by category. So, uh, I'm just going to look at the middle category, which is labeled personnel services. And you'll see that, that green bo, that green bar, those are our actual personnel, costs for personnel services, which salary and benefits. We have a, an original budget in the dark blue. And then we have a projection that's slightly less than that in the light blue. And a lot of these, these revised projections come from across the county, from business managers, analysts, department heads, who are consistently looking at their projected revenue and expenses from the original budget moving forward. And so we'll see these adjust slightly as people know more and more about where they're actually going to end up during the year. All right. If you look to the monthly expenditures, this gives you a lon, a longitudinal perspective on our budget. So monthly expenditures, kind of that light blue, dark blue graph in the center off to the left. You'll see that each month, uh, we, uh, this compares it to last year. The light blue is last year's expenditures. So, and the dark blue is this year. So every year we've spent a little bit more compared to last year. Um, and then you'll notice in November, it's quite a significant amount more. And that's, most of that significant increase is due to the, uh, funding, the construction loan for four H O S U. We didn't fund that until we had the agreement in place. So that's what that was. And similarly, on monthly revenues down below, you'll notice that in the general fund, the revenues are very low per month until we get into November. And last, and this year's, uh, revenue, the dark blue is ahead of last year's revenue. So it gives you a perspective, how are we doing this year compared to last year? And then our projected ending fund balance in the working capital, our working capital in the general fund is the next graphic to your right on the bottom. And we budgeted ten million. And based on the changes in expenses and revenue and beginning fund balance up above that we talked about, we're projecting a slight increase in our ending fund balance in the general fund. And on the FTE side, that's always important to keep an eye on because that's our major driver of costs in the county. We have a hundred and seven point three one approved FTE and we've filled ninety-one point four percent of those.
What if the hundred and seven is, um, what isn't filled?
The eight point, well, we'll get to that in a minute when we flip over.
Well, I know, but I'm.
Thousand employees.
We have over a thousand employees, so the hundred and seven doesn't.
Well, that's general fund.
Oh, I see.
Sorry, I should have said that again. We're looking at just the general fund here. So I'd appreciate your thoughts on this. Is this, um, snapshot something useful and?
Well, it, it can be, it probably will be. It's, I think, when I looked at it, I was just going to ask you, well, we explained it, so you did. But I think we're just going to have to keep looking at it each month, remind ourselves, because we, I know that you think it's hard to look at our budgets, but we've been doing this for several years. So we're used to this as the, the straightest numbers. So I'm kind of used to those. I know where to look there, too. So. But it, this'll, this'll be an interesting concept. And I know that a lot of, um, data is being presented this way now, but it'd take a little bit of time to get used to this, too, I think.
So as I'm looking at it, I'm thinking, where are the numbers coming from because of the, uh, you know, the reports from each department? So I was kind of equating the, each graph to where I find those numbers already, too. So, yeah, it takes some time to digest. Let's make sure it's a valuable tool and not just busy work to make a graphic representation of it, too.
Well, James, I don't know if James was behind this, but he's, he did great.
Oh, yeah.
Graphs and things in, when he was in the health department.
James is the mastermind.
Yeah, he's, he's good at it.
Absolutely.
But it doesn't match the next page for the general fund, which is one oh six point five one. Every, if, every, well, I don't know.
FTE or F R N.
Well, okay, if you add them together, approved FTE would be one oh six point five one per that graph on page thirty-one. And this. And it says one oh seven point three one. Approved FTE.
I think you should. I believe a committee to investigate this missing.
I will double check on that, but I believe, I believe the approved amount, I believe this is budget on the next page. Then the one oh, the one oh four five one plus the two.
Yes.
I believe that's budget. And I believe that the approved is since budget, but I will confirm. Yep. But I will confirm that.
July first opposed to, yeah, what have we changed? Yeah.
Okay.
It's a shorter, shorter report.
It's a big deal, I know.
Well, it's good to point out. I mean, that's going to be the issue is comparing, like Commissioner DeBonne said, it's comparing the, the colorful graphs to the hard numbers, which, you know, we get, which, I like the numbers. I mean, and, and so to have both is good. And I assume this is something that is accessible to us as well to go in and check. You check a box and the stuff appears, is what it looks like. You check one of the boxes on the left and.
Yeah. And, and I think, and I, my intention here was to be able to provide you with more information than just the detail, not in replacement of the detail, but in addition to it. There's more that's available here when you, you can hover over these amounts and get more detail. And what I'd like to do, if it's okay, is next month is how to provide a demo to this. Yeah? Thank you.
So we'll have a hovering, um, demonstration next week, next month?
Next month, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
We'll look for that eight tent.
Yeah. So let's keep moving. So any comments on the, um, position, uh, filled and unfilled positions? It looked kind of typical for, um.
One, one note I would add to that is if you notice the five point seven eight percent unfilled, just as a data point compared to last year, it was six point three nine percent. So we've tightened up that a little bit since last year. And that's consistent over each of the months. Want to go through the detail? Any questions?
Well, so the next one is the countywide summary of budget actuals. I have a few questions on that, just at the bottom. So there's, or just notes, I guess. So we're forty, um, forty-one point seven percent through the year. So where I was looking for just things that we've, we've spent more or we've spent less and kind of thinking about those, I would.
Yep.
And so the first one was health services, spent thirty-four percent. So that must be partly employees or number of employees, I would assume. Not sure why road is down to thirty-six percent, but it's only six percent off. On the next page, solid waste is at thirty-one percent. Which I, I guess with both solid waste and road, we, I'm just curious what your thoughts are about why they are. And then, um, the, it's good news on the risk management and health benefits are both at thirty-five. So they're both off seven, you know, they're down seven percent from what we had budgeted. So that's good news.
Yeah. So, um, one general reason that we'll see these percentages differ from, uh, whatever five months, forty-one percent, five months out of the fiscal year is due to the seasonality of spending does not tie to the number of months. So, um, you know, construction's obviously going to be affected by that. We're going to have, uh, on the revenue side, we'll receive a large amount of money at one point in the year and it'll max out almost all of our revenue. So there'll be no more for the rest of the year. So there's some of those dynamics in terms of seasonality. We, we do ask that our departments go in and actually pay attention and fine tune those projections. One is it's good for them to know where they're going to come in at the end of the year. And it's also good to be able to report that and make sure that our financials are accurate.
Well, I hadn't actually gotten to the projections now. I was really just in the column of actuals.
Yes.
Below, actuals requirements, because I'm just looking at, are we spending what we thought we'd spend? I, I'm not too worried this year about the revenues because we know where most of those come from. But, so I was just, that's, I just noted those. I, man, I, you're probably right. Road and solid waste probably do more in the, the spring half of the year than the fall half of the year, probably both of them do. So that would explain that. And health would probably be personnel. And so there really no, no real big surprises in a way.
Okay. I did want to mention one thing. If you go to page thirty-four, there was a question last month on why are we not showing a percent in the column? Why are there no percentages showing in the column of ending fund balances? And the reason is because those numbers, again, just depending on what I just mentioned in terms of revenue, when we actually receive revenue, it could be all over the place in terms of percentage. So as an example, if you look at the general fund, because we just had a significant influx with our property tax revenue, that number, that actual's number would be three hundred and one percent of budget. So it's, it's a miss, it, it can tend to be misleading.
Right. So that column works for last fiscal year when all the numbers are kind of in, but in the middle of a year.
Exactly.
Could go all over.
Exactly. Yep. And likewise, that, uh, departments that maybe spend ahead and then have a revenue source that comes in later, it's going to look the other way. Um, I will note that, see, this is our fourth attempt to get the notes straight. Um, we finally got that. It's the little things in life that you can stand back and be proud of.
You made them capital and you moved them to the right.
You did.
So, um, any questions on, I've got a few specific questions, is there? But, um, I don't think my first one is tell her notes, uh, is to page thirty-seven, which is the TRT. It looks like we're, it's nice, we're going to have a projection of five hundred and seventy-five thousand more than we thought. Which is, I guess, seven percent over or something, uh, from room taxes. And that was worth noting, yes. I'm just turning through these. I made a few little notes. Um.
Oh, page, page forty-one, um, there is a percentage in there of four hundred and forty-two percent, right in the middle, under total requirements. I was.
Say that again. Oh, yeah, I saw, yeah, I had the question, too. What is, what is that?
What is that?
It looks, it looks like they don't show the transfers into that department, any even project, projected from the general fund.
So if you look under the budget column there, the fourth number down, the minus nine hundred, nine point three million.
Yes.
So that's the administrative allocation that will go out to their other funds, the other health services funds, and it hasn't happened yet. So that four hundred and forty-two percent looks like we're significantly over. We just haven't, those funds haven't been pushed out. Haven't done anything.
Oh, I see. So there's only nine hundred and nine that are actually kept in an admin group, or is that what you're saying? Because the rest of it gets pushed out?
Yeah. So the budget is, uh, the overall budget is nine hundred thousand dollars. But that assumes that nine point three million gets pushed out elsewhere, gets allocated out elsewhere.
Comes in and goes out, right?
So it all comes in up above, those two first lines, that five point two and a four point nine, most of it anyway. And it gets allocated out down below. That allocation hasn't happened yet.
Seems kind of backwards, but that it would come in and go out as opposed to just, anyway. It didn't seem like nine million is the right number for what we spend on admin, but maybe it is.
There's two different ways to do it. We can either collect those expenses in one fund and then push them out, or you can allocate them when you actually incur them. So if you have a position that's split three different ways, those expenses would come in and against payroll, they get pushed at the, when they're actually incurred. Here, we collect them all, which just probably makes sense here. Collect all those expenses in one cost center and then allocate them out from there.
So admin's about, it's over twenty percent of the health services budget, it looks like. If you go back the page before that.
One of the things that comes to mind is the CCBHC requirements for documenting, uh, you know, reporting on, uh, you know, how this, how the dollars are spent, how they're, you know, implemented on the ground. Um, yeah. So I think that's part of the grant.
Yeah. And the downside of doing it this way is you create a double expense. So you expend it once when you pay it, then you expend it once again when you transfer it. So.
Okay. Before that, that was the sheriff's office. Uh, it looked, there was, I was noticing that the, I think last year they had quite a bit more revenues, um, than they did requirements. I mean, they ended up with a, their capital or their fund balance grew between years. This year that's showing it kind of, um, not, I mean, they're, they're spending everything. There isn't that. Do you have any, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. Can you point me specifically where you're looking?
Well, see, if they show they're going to have four hundred and ninety-two thousand more of projected rev, resource, revenues, resources, but they also show themselves spending four hundred and ninety more than they had budgeted. So they come out pretty much zero or within a couple thousand. Last year, they ended up either taking in more revenues they expected or budgeting, or, you know, spending more than they expected because the, the, the ending fund balance was a couple, three million dollars more than it had been the year before. And so I just, I'm wondering, uh, and there's an explanation in here that there's, there, he said, there, variance due to overhiring for open and soon-to-be open positions. But, and they do have a few more hires than they had last year, because I think we were in the low twenties in this year, year sixteen or something of, of, of unfilled positions. I just wondered if you had any thoughts on that or, uh, or, you know. To see that many projections from the sheriff's office is unique, I think, this year to have all those.
Could be due to their paying a little bit closer attention to their actual more detail. I'm not surprised. detail. I'm not surprised. And where I was going is your original comments, I look back to fiscal nineteen, and I look at the hundred and three percent over res, over resources, in other words, revenue exceed, received over budget. And ninety-seven percent of our requirements, ninety-seven percent of the budget, that's very common. I mean, in public, in government, that's usually what you see, is a little bit more in revenue, because you're conservative when you budget, and a little bit less. And nobody wants to go over an appropriation. It's really an embarrassing thing for us to come back to you and say, hey, we spent a dollar more than what was appropriated. So I think it's very, very common. So I actually like to see these, all of these, what Joe has done over here on the right-hand side, where he's paying attention. And ideally, as he gets closer to the end of the year, they should be able to come in and, and know exactly where they're going.
No, that's, that's great. That's just diff, you know, it's been hard, I think, in the past for a lot of departments to project, you know, what they're going to spend. But I guess what I'm calling attention to is the fact that last year, there was quite a gap between resources and requirements of, I think of a couple million. This year doesn't show it, and I don't know, I'm, I don't know, I'm just curious why. It's not a huge issue, but...
That I don't know, except if they've decided to spend down some of their fund balance. That could be part of it as well.
Or maybe, yeah.
If you like, I can get a specific, I can get an answer.
Or maybe they just anticipated in their budget that they lower, more rev, you know, maybe they got closer after the experience. I don't, I was just curious.
Yeah. Okay.
Anything else on those? Health, sheriffs?
What is it? The CCBHC funding went through May twenty-second, I believe, is all that they approved it for? You know, the continuation.
Janice is nodding back there.
I was talking to Senator Wyden's person on Friday, and that's what she told me. They were hoping it would have a longer life, you know, legally. But that's what they approved.
And then on page forty-five, the substantially more PILT revenue than we thought, seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Which is good. And, so halfway through, the parole and probation looks, I think you, I think you do have more, the variances, you have more filled-in changes. The projections are not as much the actuals. We've had, this time, prior years, I think the projections and the actuals have been, there's been less filled in. So that's good to see. Let's see if I have anything. I think that was maybe...
Well, it certainly makes the financials more relevant.
Yeah. But we do have, we've had low expectations, because we, it's hard, I know it's hard to project it. So that's all I had on the budget, or your reports.
Yeah, so I'm not bringing anything. It's a good information here. You know, I would advocate for any citizen that wants to know what's going on in the county to flip through this document. It's pretty amazing. It is a, you know, good work product of our finance group every month that we make available to the world.
Well, we appreciate your interest.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of what we need to do, is pay attention to this.
No, I was happy to see solid waste was at forty-four percent, when the year-to-date is forty-one point seven. So that means that people are still taking a lot of things to our transfer stations. So that, that's a good number to know. And thank you for putting comparison on the fair and expo on six fifteen, because when you look at it, and it says twenty-nine percent, so current year receipts are thirty-two percent of year-to-date. They were thirty-three percent last year. So I guess, what is it? Endo, enduro cross, post moment loss was, that's the reason why we have that, that line? I mean, you know, for the, when you clump everything together. And, you know, the variance, events revenue is down ninety thousand, eighty-nine thousand.
I'm sorry, I'm...
On page fifty?
I'm on page fifty.
Okay, so the first line says we're, events revenue, we're down eighty-nine thousand.
Oh, down.
And down here, you've got the note because of one major event and a couple of others.
Yep.
And the RV park is still humming along, you know? It's a good thing. And also the fund balance for health benefits is, what, projected to go up to, what, page fifty-three, up to seventeen million?
Sixteen million.
Well, the budget is sixteen point three million, but actuals look like...
Actuals right now.
Yeah, okay, so that's right now.
So the projected, if you slide over a couple more columns, is fifteen nine nine five.
So it's going to go down a teeny bit?
Mm-hmm.
You're entering thirteen thousand.
Yep.
And that's, that's without touching it?
Correct. Yep. And if that plays out, that's, that speaks, you know, to the Eback and the Budget Committee in making a decision to, to lower the department charges by five percent, to start to bring that down a little bit.
Because it was going...
We'll see how that plays out.
Right.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions on this?
Nope.
Nope.
For anybody watching, that's a process we go through roughly once a month, or pretty regularly. And it's great that we're able to do that. So, so we'll conclude that item, move on to number five, which is consideration of approval to create a site account with the Oregon Public Employees Retirement Fund. Just a matter, we got fairly good long briefing at, at our Budget Committee meeting on, so...
Okay. Moving on to page fifty-five in your packets, what I will do is just briefly go over the staff report with you, that's in front of you. As you know, earlier this year, the state legislature and governor signed, or the legislator, legislature passed, and the governor signed into law Senate Bill ten forty-nine, which included a number of reforms and options for PERS with the overall goal of mitigating, to the extent possible, the impact of future projected PERS rates on public employers. One of those is the employer incentive fund, and that essentially matches investments, cash investments by public employers, up to a certain amount, but matches it at twenty-five percent. So twenty-five cents for every dollar in, of local cash money that's invested in the PERS retirement fund is matched by the state. We applied, Deschutes County applied, and was awarded the twenty-five percent match to the maximum amount that was available to us, which was just under five million dollars. To actually realize that match, we're required to make a, a, an investment in the Public Employees Retirement Fund system of just under twenty million. So the county makes nineteen million nine sixty-four five twenty-six, and receives a twenty-five percent match of four million nine ninety-one one thirty-two. Although we have that application approved, the county's under no obligation to make that deposit, or some amount less than that, somewhere between zero and that twenty million dollar figure. As we've discussed in the past, the concept of this is to impact our costs, particularly with some other techniques to flatten out the, the wall we run into. We've heard about the PERS cliff, but we have a wall that we run into in terms of costs coming up in about nine years. And so this is part of that program, to lower those costs and flatten that curve out, so that we have some stability in costs being passed on to our county departments. And flipping over the page here, and under fiscal implications, there's several options in terms of where these funds could come from. They're listed here. And it is likely that, that we will probably need a budget adjustment, depending on what you approve. And we can take care of that in January or February later, when we know a little bit more about that. It doesn't have to happen today. But basically, as we get down towards the bottom, a decision requested there is whether or not we want to participate in the site account, and accept the grant funds, the matching funds. If yes, we do, then what amount do we want to put into the account? And where should those source of funds come from? We have until the thirty-first of this month to make that deposit with PERS, so we have a few more days. And we're seeking your direction on that.
So, you know, thanks for the, really for the presentation of the Budget Committee was just tremendous, and this, with the PowerPoint, et cetera. You know, when I, I put this in context of, you did your projections over the next seventeen years, or whatever, and it's, you know, it gets up to the, where it's showing our PERS obligations is, are over forty million a year, by the thirties. And even in the twenties, they're up at about thirty, well, they're at forty then, and then they go up beyond that. If we just paid PERS the way they think we're going to have to pay PERS, it's a huge amount, because we're at about twenty million now. So that chart showed us, if you look at the whole thing, we're talking about four or five hundred million dollars that Deschutes County would have to pay in PERS costs over the next, I think it's seventeen or eighteen years, or whatever. So whatever we're doing here, if we did the whole amount, the benefit to us is we get, we put five million, we get five million extra dollars. So it's one percent of what we're going to need. It's, so, so I put it in context of that. And so I'm not in, really in favor of putting it all in, the whole nineteen million. I, I looked at the comparison of the sheets that you, you gave us a copy of what all the other counties had, suggested, et cetera. You know, Clackamas, I don't even think did any. I kind of compared it to bigger counties. Washington did less than us, and they're three times as big as us. Multnomah County was fifty. So I don't really want to be leading, I mean, I don't mind leading the pack, but I don't want to lead very much, because I think there must be reasons that other counties, one is we, maybe they don't have the revenues, but why other counties aren't doing it. And my concern is, I don't want to use, we've spent a lot of years saving up the reserve fund, and I can only see using part of that, because this is a very long scenario, this seventeen, eighteen years, before you see it going down, the PERS obligations. And I'd like to keep some cash on hand. I don't really want to, I don't really want to turn it all over to the state, because I don't know what they'll come up with later about their, the site account thing. And so I'm just, and, kind of like we talked about the budget. So I'm more in the, I think, I wouldn't really want to go much beyond the twelve million or so, maybe twelve and up, a little bit from there, and then spread it across a couple of things. We can talk about where we get it, but I think that's, that's my initial thought on it, so...
I do lean into this. This is an opportunity, you know, for the benefit of the Oregon Public Employees Retirement Fund. There's the big picture, you know, getting to a critical mass, you know, for the benefit of the whole state, you know? So I mean, I, I like participating is kind of the first statement. You know, we're in a great spot financially, and this was many years in the making. I mean, ten and fifteen and twenty years before I got here, just the choices made were amazing. So we can celebrate the fact that we even have this opportunity. So, yeah, we'll figure out what number is, it's appropriate, you know, consultation with professional staff, and, you know, whoever else may have an opinion up here at this point. And then some number is going to be good, and we'll get to it.
Doesn't that number have to be determined by December thirty-fourth?
No, I'm ready to, well, my point is we have, we could, we could go from the whole amount to any number less than. I mean, it might, we're in a good spot, is my point.
We are in a good spot, but then you're talking about putting our money into, out of our control, to the state fund. So, you know, because we are in a good spot, that we could put all, what is it, nineteen, nineteen point nine million, you know? But is that really good for our citizens? I mean, that's the thing, because we're talking about taking it out of our control. So I can, I can understand what Commissioner Henderson is saying. He's saying twel, what, you said twelve million?
Twelve million, or...
You know, I don't know. I, I was thinking, I don't know, fifteen million, you know, somewhere in there, maybe not the whole, almost twenty million dollars, just because, I mean, I realize it's a twenty-five percent match, but then again, you never know what the market's going to do. And who is in charge? And it won't be Greg, it'll be someone else. And maybe you think they're going to do a better job. I know you said that they have access to things that we legally can't invest in. And yet, I honestly love our conservative rules of government investing for our county. I think that's why we're in such a great position, because I was witness to someone else who didn't have those same rules, and they lost significant money a year ago. I mean, significant money. So I've always liked to be a lot more conservative. It's boring at times, but, you know, it's safer.
So twelve and fifteen, you know, or, I'm open to, you know, something in the middle to, I, I just, the other thought I had was about just the timeframe of this thing being twenty years. And if you look back twenty years, that was two booms ago in our area, was how much different, and what the interest rates were there. And so, twenty years is a long, longer time than it seems like, when you're just investing money, et cetera. So that was why I didn't really want to drain our PERS reserve fund, and, and, but I'm, so you're in favor, Alec, it sounds like all three of us are in favor of putting money into it. We're at that point. I, I know you wanted to put, I think you wanted to put it all in, but I, so...
I think there was, yeah, professional analysis about what if, all over the place here.
Yeah. And we did hear that strongly at the budget meeting. But, so, I, well, then I would, yeah, what do you want?
So then I start to think of PERS reserve fund leaving two million dollars there. So that gets it to thirteen, you know? So I mean, I, that number in there somewhere, sounds like the number that we could all, you know, there's a number in there, twelve to fourteen to fifteen or something. But if we leave, because I think we've put annually, what, two million dollars from general fund this last year? What did we use for offsetting?
We used three, three point two five million.
Yeah, we used three point two. So, so, yeah, I like the idea, I guess I, I could peg it on leaving two million dollars in the PERS reserve fund, just as, you know, kind of a round number. And if we go one way or the other on that, that's fine, yeah.
Thirty million.
Thirteen million.
Which gets us to the same place that you started.
I'd be in favor of the thirteen million. I, I would actually suggest that we take some out of the health benefits, because that was a goal, and leave more in the PERS, PERS reserve. But, and then of the other suggested funds, the only one that I didn't really think we should, I wouldn't mind taking a million out of the general fund, because we have quite a bit there in the transit room. But, so that's the formula. But do you want that, set that number, or are you proposing thirteen million?
Well, yeah, I mean, with your opening statements and the conclusions I came to, it sounds like a number that we can get to.
Do you want to say anything further?
Commissioners, I appreciate the discussion, and I'm not uncomfortable with the, the number that we invest there. I, there's been some, we've been having some discussion of the use of HBT funds for this. There may be some legal implications with that. So we wouldn't necessarily need to finalize, you know, the decision on where the money comes from today. We could, we could put some money in from, you know, say, just the general fund, and leave whatever amount that you're comfortable with in the PERS reserve in order to commit ourselves to the state and finalize the transaction. And then, as we, you know, sort of refine our, our information on use of HBT, then we can come back at a later date, and we can readjust those numbers to the final spread.
Well, that, that sounds great. Because I, I had a question, too, about the transient room tax, whether that's usable or not. And then I also wondered if our individual departments that have large balances, is that a possibility, too, if they had a lot of employees? So that was, so I don't know if we've looked into that, departments, or...
But if we come up with an amount that's less than the total that's in the PERS reserve, that's a pretty simple transaction. And if we want to backfill it, or move some other dollars around internally, that could be two separate actions, basically. So the other thing is, you know, we are in that season of capital needs. You know, we talked about that, and then at the Budget Committee meeting also. You know, we are doing capital projects now. There's requests, like the fairgrounds, you know, that capital is, however we want to schedule it, it's, you know, it's just capital that need, would need to go out to be, to build, you know? And if we want to, as they say, schedule how it... And if we want to, as they say, schedule how it would be repaid or if it's not repaid. Plus the courthouse, you know, if we're to put a strong push on a judge or two, there'll be a need to get a building in the planning. So, yeah, there's other needs for those dollars in the future.
I think the Health Benefits Trust Fund though, if that's something that we can use part of those funds, that seems to be appropriate. Because that fund, I know, is legally a lot larger than it needs to be.
Well, I like the symmetry of the fact it's, it's a benefit and PERS is a benefit. So it's transferring it from allocation of benefits, reserves for allocation of benefits.
Yeah, and I would say they both benefit everybody in the county.
Yeah, yeah.
The only disproportionate contribution there would be that the general funds put in two million dollars per year into PERS over the last couple of years. But other than that, it benefits everybody.
Well, and we could get down to that choice, you know, let's document and think about the equity across the organization, because there are different rates and different fee structures for the different departments. So, you know, we, we could do that analysis to make some policy choices on there also.
So are we talking about thirteen million then? That's the compromise?
Yeah, where we, sounds like. So what I would seek is a motion approving the creation of a side account and funding it with thirteen million dollars with the specific funds to be used to be determined. Does that sound, that's what we need, right? Basically. Dave, is that what we need, a motion like that? Okay.
I refer to Tom if that captures what he's looking for.
Yeah, and just, just for confirmation, I guess since we're, we're not, we have sufficient resources in the PERS Reserve, I guess just for now, in order to, again, finalize the agreement with the state that we take the full thirteen point three out of PERS Reserve, knowing that we can come back perhaps during the budget process when we're finalizing the funds and, and put more back into the PERS Reserve if we'd like that to be at a higher, higher number. And that could come out of the, you know, one of these other funds that are listed on the page, including the HBT, once we, you know, have, have assessed, you know, any, any legal ramifications in the use of that money or general fund or one of these...
Do we have to wait till the budget process?
No, no, we could do it certain, certainly.
January or February. I mean, it seems like it'd be nice to work on it separately almost because...
So you just said thirteen point three? Are we saying thirteen point three or are we saying thirteen million?
Depends how the motion comes out. I heard him say that too.
Yeah, I know, I wrote that, I'm going, okay, well...
Well, and I had mentioned two, two million dollars is kind of a round number.
Okay, well...
Does somebody want to make the motion then, to approve the side account, the setting up of the side account?
I approve, we approve the side account with the Oregon Public Employees Retirement Fund with thirteen million from Deschutes County for the twenty-five percent match. So does someone have that match number would be? I didn't bring my, my calculator on the most important day.
But we'll count on the final...
Big number.
Three and a quarter.
Three and a quarter?
Three two five?
Million?
Okay.
Okay, and I'll second it.
Okay, further comments? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
And Chair Boches? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing all the work on it, it was tremendous. The PERS projections are truly scary.
Truly scary.
Well, all right, our next line item is the 2020 Board of Commissioners Planning Session. Whitney is going to join us to talk about that a little bit.
Good morning, Commissioners. Whitney Hale, Administrative Services. As you know, the Board's annual retreat and goal-setting session is scheduled and coming up at the end of January. Staff wanted to touch base with you leading up to that to discuss a couple of things so that we can adequately prepare for that meeting. I was hoping today that we could briefly discuss the location for that meeting, the Board's preferences on that, as well as any agenda items that you'd like to have covered for that meeting. So I'll go ahead and kick things off with some location options. Sharon and Megan have done a lot of pre-work in this area, and they currently have a reservation at the Parks and Rec Meeting Room, the Riverbend Room over at the Parks and Rec Building near the Old Mill. But that's a tentative hold, and if the Board would like, we're happy to pursue other location options. So we just wanted to check in about kind of your thoughts and feelings about where you might like to, to be this year.
Go ahead.
I, I thought nine one one would be perfect, because it's closer to my house, right? I'd like, I might be able to...
You want to go there?
I thought solid waste made sense because we just finished a solid waste management plan.
Okay.
And I, I guess I feel like we should go to one of our facilities and go to the Parks and Rec personally, but...
Okay.
Not that I, I mean, I pay a lot to Parks and Rec, but anyway, I'm...
I'll defer to Commissioner Dare's choice here because she'll be chair in this.
Well, I just think it's a great room.
That's true, yeah, there you go. She's, she's the facilitator too, isn't she?
No, I mean, I just think it's a great room. I thought last year we were a bit cramped, and I think having that space...
Now, there's a second room, not the one we meet in for the...
I know, there's the first room.
Yeah, the first room. Is that what you're thinking of, that room?
I think that, that one is still a lot bigger than what we had last year.
We will check in.
We've been in that room before, and that, it worked, I think, very well. They've got a little sort of mini kitchen in there too.
Oh, good.
Perfect. I will, we will look into that, thank you. And then, as you know, the Board traditionally has used a part, portion of this day to set goals for the coming year, which serve as the kickoff process for departments to set their coming year goals and objective, or their, excuse me, their performance measures that correlate to your goals. So we were planning on having time set aside for you to discuss your priorities for the coming year. We were also, as we have in the past, planning to have departments prepare a list of sort of things that they see coming to them in the coming year, challenges they might face, or projects that they might be anticipating tackling. We will give that to the Board in advance of the meeting, and department heads would be on call to come in and chat with you if, if there's areas where you'd like to deep dive. So we just wanted to make sure that that sounds like a good direction to head in and also capture anything else that the Board would like included on this year's agenda.
One thing I think we should do this year is talk about capital needs and capital projects, because we're going to develop a philosophy, the same one, yeah, philosophy, because we're looking at some requests for bigger things now than we've had the last couple of years and the possibility with the courthouse. So how are we going to approach those? You know, what's our philosophy about those in terms of, of it and stuff? And maybe we'll get some background. I mean, the counties built a lot of buildings the last twenty years, or twenty, you know, like this building and the facilities and, and over there and all that stuff. And so there's, I don't know who, who was in charge of all that. It'd be interesting to hear from whoever did those, what their philosophy was. I don't know if that's Commissioner Luke, or if that's the private, but I'd be interesting to hear a historical context about building these projects and how they, they were smart about, you know, having the state involved in some of those and, I don't know, just...
Well, and just like I was talking earlier, cost of construction, you know, I mean, when you go from wood frame structure to an I-beam structure, you know, cement siding to bricks, or, I mean, what are those big choices? You know, maybe an architectural review on cost of construction, just so we have a baseline. That would be interesting. Not a big session, but if we could do that for forty-five minutes, that would be interesting.
That would be interesting.
Because, you know, I mean, the, the door frames and the doors, I remember Susan Ross talking about, you know, just the, the door, just the heft of the doors and, and, you know, some different things for public front doors, you know, just a little different than residential, so...
But it'd be interesting to talk to, you know, even from one of the larger builders that does both private, you know...
Yeah.
Commercial buildings.
Where are those like, oh, well, that's going to be twice as much as soon as you make a statement, yeah.
But, yeah, so that might be an interesting...
Just a session.
We could talk about it more, but I, do you like the idea of a capital projects discussion?
Yeah, I do. In fact, we were actually planning on coming before you the first meeting in January, on the sixth. We have a draft report that we've been working on that outlines the possible capital projects that may come in front of you over the next year, and also possible funding sources, you know, whether that's use of reserves or, so we kind of, you have a, two sets, and we're not expecting any decisions.
Why don't we do it in the first meeting? Well...
We actually have to move the meeting to the seventh, because we have an election and that, for the new senator, it's actually my senator for the state, on the sixth.
In Ontario.
Yes, and they set it up in Ontario.
Okay, well, or, just early in January.
We'll do that, and then that'll help shape what we do at the, the retreat part of this, is we'll, from what we see on that first meeting in January, we'd go ahead and do the other. That'd be great.
So would you want to be over in Ontario or do that on a phone call?
Oh, I need to be there.
I was planning, I mean, I like to go on too. Yeah, so yeah, we may all end up there.
I'm sorry, but I, I am...
It's the other side of the state, I'm just acknowledging that...
Why is it set up over there? It should not be.
Should be somewhere centrally located.
Yes, like John Day.
Well, because when we were in Jefferson County, there was a few people dialed in. Yeah, I mean, I'd much rather be in the room also. You know, it's not a long meeting, but it's, yeah.
Well, I dialed the other one in, Burns, or wherever it was, John Day, but, you know...
I know, unfortunately.
Okay, so I think, and you both want to do the, talk about individual priorities too? We did that last year, you know, start out with that and then get department reviews, okay? I think, I like the agenda you set out, and it was, worked last year well, I thought. Did you agree?
It's good to, yeah, just spend the day.
Okay, get this set up. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, our next action item is the, an update on the Pacific Source contract with Deschutes County and where we are with that.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Janice Garceau, Deputy Director of Deschutes County Behavioral Health, and I was asked to come and spend some time talking with you about where we are in our contract negotiation for our OHP services contract with Pacific Source. So I'm ready to go.
So my first question was, is this the contract that started in July or it starts in January?
Well, this is the contract with, for which the negotiations began in July, and it should be effective January one. That's the goal.
Twenty twenty.
That is the goal.
So it's, it's, we're still not late, like the other one where it was, you know, months late or a year late.
Like a little month late? No, this one's on time, almost.
Well, we, well, it is very close to being on time. I am hopeful that we are able to wrap it up in the two meetings scheduled in January.
So I guess in just a high level sense, both Dave and you can, I'd like to hear a little bit about what are the, the issues that you're kind of working on, or what are the main issues in the, in this contract? This is between, for all of behavioral health that, that's paid Medicaid with Medicaid funds, correct, to that population that our county serves? So what are the topics you're working on? And I understand, Dave, you're involved at this point or do?
Yeah, Janice has kept legal involved at a, at a good rate, and we get involved not as extensively as she and her team, but we've certainly been involved. I think she can, Janice can give you a lot more chapter and verse on it. I'd look at it from the big picture of it's, it's a different type of negotiation this year. It's a more global negotiation, with more partners at the table, expands beyond just behavioral health and deals with physical health. And so...
Is that because of the Modernization Act or the CCO two, or whatever it is the...
It's because the CCO two point O, Oregon Health Authority Contract requires coordinated care organizations to have a global budget and not have behavioral health treated as a carve-out. So they're expected to address their entire medical spend, including behavioral health in the global budget. And currently, that involves three partners, the CMHPs, the Community Mental Health Programs, COIPA, which is the organization that sort of organizes the primary care providers of, to OHP members, and then the St. Charles Hospital spend. So those are the three folks in the room with their various teams negotiating this larger contract.
That, that kind of captures it, and I think one of the, I don't know, complicating factors, but more challenging is having the independent physicians as, as part of this global negotiation, because they don't quite have the, I think, the type of skin in the game the hospital and the CMHPs have. And I think that complicates it just a little bit and has, in my opinion.
Is, are CMHP the community health, mental health?
The CMHPs are the Community Mental Health Programs, so that at this point is Deschutes County Health Services and then Best Care, which is now representing both Crook and Jefferson County.
Oh. So last time we were, it was just us and Pacific Source or the...
Well, it, it was just us because we were only visible to ourselves. The health partners had a separate negotiation that had started as well and have historically. We are now all together negotiating in this larger...
You're all there plus the COIP, and what was the third one?
St. Charles.
Oh, St. Charles, yeah.
So they were negotiating, but now it's all kind of...
So his, yeah, historically, Pacific Source would sort of, would, would navigate the settlement of the COIPA and the St. Charles contract, and then whatever was left over really was there for the behavioral health spend. And this year, it's quite different. So that's added a layer of complexity for all of the partners, and, and it's gone relatively well, all things considered. So we are now at the point where the Community Mental Health Programs have, are ready to agree to the terms that we have arrived at. The hospital is ready to agree. They made a couple of last-minute suggestions for small changes. And COIPA is, and that's the group that represents this group of primary care providers, is having some hesitation around a couple of issues. And we had hoped to get to agreement last Thursday, and it's been pushed out now into January. One of the other issues that's, that's important is that the contract this year has an auto-renewing clause, which means we simply get the good fortune to have that contract renewed regardless of where we are in the negotiation process. The downside of that is that we're stuck with the rate until the new contract is executed. So we're interested in wrapping this up as quickly as possible, and frankly, we've had discussions internally and with David Doyle about if it's not wrapped up this month, what is, what are our options for recovering the losses of not being able to generate the additional revenue that the new rates would create should the contract...
You're assuming the new rates are higher than the old rates?
We know they are. We've negotiated for that.
Percentage are they higher?
Well, it's complicated because some is fee-for-service and some is capitated, but overall, it results in about, a conservative estimate is about eight hundred thousand dollars in, for the year. So that's about seventy thousand dollars a month that we stand to lose every month the contract is not executed. So we're really invested in getting this done quickly.
So the scope of it's broader because it's mental health and primary care. The number of parties is broader because you've, they've included the, the hospital and the COIP. A, what about what you're negotiating? Is it primarily just the rates or is it areas of coverage as well or...
It's rates and things like what share will we have in risk, what will be the level of our withhold? And we always have an incentive withhold that withholds a certain percentage of the fee-for-service portion of the contract until the end of the year, when we've demonstrated that we've performed on certain expectations. And then also the potential to share in surplus. So it's, it's much more complicated. The metrics work is still being completed, but typically, Pacific Source has been very helpful in terms of agreeing that if those are not finalized, they will finalize the portion of the contract that reimburses us for our work, which is helpful. And then we amend later when we finish any last details related to metrics.
Questions?
Thank you for the update. I know we were, yeah, we've been in the spot where we've been extending contracts for month at a time and deepening the negotiations, so hope we don't, we don't end up there in the first part of next year.
I don't think we will, and we will ask for redress if we do.
Yeah.
It sounds like when you're asking for redress, it's because you, you're ready to agree to something and you...
Yes.
Feeling somebody else is holding it up or...
Well, and they may be holding it up for very legitimate reasons. It just puts us in a difficult position fiscally, so...
Interesting.
And you're talking primary care physicians?
I'm talking COIPA, which is Central Oregon, I always forget...
Independent Physicians Association.
Physicians Association. It's really a group that, that organizes primary care providers, that advocates for them in these kinds of contract negotiations, and they have a board, and they represent a number of primary care providers in the community that serve Oregon Health Plan members. So, yeah.
Other questions?
No, I just was going to make a comment. Someone had mentioned to me actually this morning that they were wondering what is going on in Central Oregon. When you need to see a doctor, a lot of times you're waiting a couple of months in order to get into that doctor. And they were just really concerned with our community having enough physicians. So, you know, just a thought out there, I, you know, I'm working on... So, you know, just a thought out there. I, you know, I'm working on getting us a new psychiatrist or another psychiatrist, but, you know, this is a bigger issue. You know, are we, I know a lot of older doctors are retiring. So, but what is, what does our community look like, our physician community? So, you know, it sounds like that could be part of what's holding this up.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, they're, they're the experts on their line of work, but I think they're waiting for revenue numbers in January to make some final decisions about the contract.
Okay. I can understand that.
Yep.
Other comments, Dave?
Nothing for open general session. Probably are getting into executive session.
Okay. All right. Well, I, thank you for joining us and kind of going over that and good luck with your continued negotiations.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have good holidays.
Same to you. We had a couple of other things on the, that are kind of action items, I guess. I'm not sure what they're, Whitney, you had, Whitney had something here on the provider agreement for STIF. Should we, that sounds like an action item to me or if we've got, I don't think we should take up the next matter till 12 because there may be people coming that want to see the discussion.
It was another item. It, it's, we're not asking for any board actions. So that's why we didn't put it on the agenda. It's just kind of, kind of giving you notice of something that's coming up soon. We do have a couple other, other items that we could discuss. We don't have any executive session. So you can, happy to do those now or if you want to take a break, either way.
What's the board's, Will, what, do you want to, do you think, do you think we should wait till 12 or do you think?
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Or do you think we should start talking about the Tara Bonner fire?
We can just take a couple of other items and maybe start ten to twelve or whatever people know the following.
All right. Do you want to just talk about this for, I mean?
So Whitney Hale, Administrative Services. I have two items for the board that I'll pass out. One, Commissioner Henderson was the recap of our discussion last week about filling vacancies on the STIF Advisory Committee. So we were able to meet with Commissioner Henderson and we have some recommendations for the board about who might fill those vacancies and the term lengths that they would serve. So I'll go ahead and pass that out first.
And this is the one we were going to act on probably the first meeting in January? Because we needed him in place by, for the Janu, late January meeting, yeah.
So this is all the same, or this is? I have two covers, okay. Okay. How's that going?
And the rest is the information about the applicants, yeah. So we can discuss this now or we can discuss this the first meeting, but?
I think staffs thought if the Commissioners are supportive of these recommendations, which I can go ahead and do an overview of, is that we might prepare letters of appointment for that first meeting in January so that they're just available for you on your consent agenda. Would you like for me to sort of walk through the recommendations on?
For the three people you're referring to?
Correct, yes.
If you'd like to, real quick, I mean, yeah.
Okay.
Backed up pretty well here.
As the board knows, we had two vacancies for committee members and then a vacant alternate position. So after reviewing applicants who had originally applied to serve on the committee, we have three recommendations. One is a resident out of Sisters who serves as the Public Works Director for the City of Sisters. And that person would replace an outgoing committee member who also lived in Sisters. So we thought that there was some continuity in that appointment. The second recommendation is a gentleman from Sun River, who serves on the Board of Directors for the Sun River Chamber. He's been involved in the planning for the Sun River to Le Pine Route. And previously there wasn't any representation on the Advisory Committee from Sun River. So we thought that that made a lot of sense, especially given the board's interest in that specific route. And then our recommendation for the alternate position is a gentleman out of Redmond who works as a, who works in the business field. And so that gentleman, our thought process there was one of our outgoing Advisory Committee members represent, was a business owner. And so we were trying to kind of match and fill a vacancy with a similar applicant. COIC staff did reach out to all three of these folks last week just to make sure that they were still available and interested in serving because they had applied some time ago. And all three of them were very enthusiastic about participating if the board was supportive of appointing them, so.
That's great.
Good.
From the original list.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Okay. If the board's supportive, we'll prepare those letters and get that on your agenda for early January.
Sounds, sounds good.
And then the second item I had relating to STIF, I put a note in your boxes on Friday. I'll go ahead and pass these out. Do you need copies of?
I have mine.
Okay, perfect. I'm going to just.
The provider agreement.
So as the board knows, we recently went through a process with COIC for the STIF process where you ranked and prioritized your projects that will fall under the STIF program. And so this contract essentially lays out how we were, how we will pass dollars through from ODOT to COIC to execute these projects at a high level. So this is a draft and we weren't requesting board action on it today, but we did want to get it in front of you and potentially put it on your agenda for now the January 7th meeting for action then. But I just wanted to see if there were any questions that the board might have about this draft that we could help run down in the interim or that you might have for Dave.
Is this the same con, don't, don't we have this already in place for the first year or last year or we didn't do one last year?
This is, has an effective date of July 1 of 19. So that my understanding, this is the first agreement for STIF.
Oh.
We have a similar.
STIF has all been planning up to this point, the list of projects, the analysis of what we think we're going to do. So this is it when money really flows. You know, I'm just making sure I have it in context. So this is the, kind of the longer-term commitment of a couple million dollars at a time we're going to come through and we're going to have this document between the two parties.
So essentially, once this is finalized and authorized, COIC will go forth and make these projects happen. But this is really the kickoff for the entire process, making this a reality, so.
So, yeah, what we'd done before was the application, the, we made recommendations and now we've changed, you know, we've made new recommendations with the new, now that we know how much money.
Correct. So the board's priority projects reflected in this are the, the same projects that we recently discussed. And so, yes.
So the forecast, I had noticed there's a kind of the qualified entity list for the forecasted dollars. There's a new forecast that came up like last week or something. So that, the numbers are up just slightly. Remember there was a big number, 130 list and then it went backwards and now it's going up just a little bit, I think, is the big picture.
I see.
So the last page on there, there's a new forecast.
Oh, yeah. That's what you're saying.
So we may be able to work our way back into that 130% list a little bit more.
And then the, the substance really is the, this payment terms and schedule. That's where it's really lined out, what, what we're giving them responsibility to do and how they're going to do it and how much.
Essentially the statement of work.
Yeah.
So in this Terms and Conditions, page two of 19, Contract, talks, Early Termination Parties' Convenience. County or contractor may terminate upon 30 calendar days written by either party. I almost think this is more of a commitment than that. I mean, they're going to go buy three-quarter of a million dollar buses and.
That's correct. And, and there's language further in that deals with what happens if you have that termination in place and commitments that are already made.
Okay, so there's other.
This is standard boilerplate that's in the majority of our contracts. It's a convenience for termination clause. I call it, everybody's going to play nice clause because if either side can take their stuff and walk away on 30 days' notice, it's amazing how it makes people get along and find a way to make it work.
And there's contingencies.
Yes.
Because, yeah, I mean, if there's big old financial commitments in there for especially purchasing those big expensive buses.
Okay. Further questions or?
Actually, my comment would be, the word at my last COIC meeting was that we needed nimble buses. So I'm not really sure that means giant buses, but we need nimble buses.
Well, they just, yeah, that Gulick bus or whatever. They're going to buy one or two more of those, I know. So that's what I'm just referring, that could be the biggest, you know, if they make a three-quarters of a million dollar commitment and then we decide, well, you know, we don't want to do this anymore. That, it'd just be a bad scenario. But I know what you're saying. They were talking about smaller buses for the different routes.
Well, and I think that was what we were talking about with them in their first meetings. And so it's kind of, they're moving actually a direction.
When I was just bringing up the worst-case business scenario, not the.
Yeah, no, but it sounds like they're moving, I think what you're saying is they're moving the direction we had talked about earlier in the year about smaller buses and the first mile and the last mile and doing.
Yes.
Supposedly just big buses going on set routes and so. Other comments or?
No, that would be my only comment.
So if we had any issues, we'd be looking at those and getting them to Dave probably before the January 7th meeting.
We'll plan to put this on your agenda for the 7th, yeah, and happy to answer any questions you might have in the meantime.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Whitney.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Tom, what do you have?
Commissioners, quick question. As you, I'm sure know, next August is the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment that gave women the right to vote. And our county clerk, Nancy Blankenship, is preparing some ceremonies to mark that anniversary.
I thought we already had it.
Yeah, it's coming up. It was.
I thought the vote was signed in 1919.
1920. August the 20th is when it was ratified.
It was a whole thing at the Portrait Gallery.
Yeah, maybe it was passed in the, whoever presented, like the Senator House and then the vote by the states.
Yeah, I already thought it happened. Okay.
Oh, so that's, that's coming up next summer. This coming February is the 100th anniversary of the League of Women Voters. And so they have asked if you would consider a proclamation to be on your agenda this February that celebrates the work of the league over the last 100 years. So that's, that's a choice of yours on whether you're in support of that.
Well, this is one of those examples of, you know, providing the history. What did it look like 100 years ago? You know, what, what was the reason, the motivation? Yeah, so I mean, I'd be supportive of, you know, maybe even take a look at the proclamation and get down to the, you know, leaning towards the, the great history.
Yeah, I'd be a favorite.
It wasn't that long ago, was it? 100 years. We weren't even voting. I mean, isn't that amazing? When women complain, I go like, oh, my gosh, I've only been voting for 100 years, so. And even women at that time, not all of them wanted it. So isn't that amazing?
Yeah.
But there was a whole huge, at the Portrait Gallery, because I clearly pointed it out.
No, there was some, there was a lot of news about it this year. I can't, I don't know what happened this year. You know, 19 versus 1920, but there was stuff celebrated this year. Probably somebody knows in the audience.
We should know more information on this.
Can I Google it?
Yeah, yeah.
Google it. Well, that sounds good. Why don't we have the, a look at the.
Oregon's activities in preparation or in the year before?
What is the?
I think the reason it was, it was actually passed by Congress in 1919, but it wasn't ratified by the states until 1920.
So ratified by states, yeah, so it's states.
You have to have a certain number of states ratify amendment before it goes in the OBTAC, yeah, that, that sounds good.
So it's federal relative to state.
So I will, I'll share a draft proclamation with you and then we can discuss it. When next we meet, when's convenient and to give a final answer.
Well, I knew.
We just learned, yeah, I mean, whereas 1919 this, whereas 20, or 1920 was this. So there we go.
Yeah, it was passed by Congress.
So my, I knew my great-grandmother when I was young and she would have definitely been able to vote then. She was born in the 1870s and my grandmother, I don't think would have been able to vote yet. She voted not long after that, so, interesting, her grandmother's. Okay, that sounds good. Do you have another matter too?
This one, I don't know if we have a lot of time, but I brought this up with, a couple of weeks ago with Commissioners Adair and Debone. You were, Commissioner Anderson gone that day. But we've been working with Black Butte Ranch Service District the last few months on, they've asked whether they can join the county self-insured health plan. We've bannered around some numbers with them on what that might take to enter the plan primarily having to do with buying in in our balance in our health benefits fund. So we're not paying for their claims out of the gate that they, they add to that in a prorated sense to that insurance fund, our health benefits fund in order to equitably have our plan pay claims related to Black Butte. So, and this is just for their command staff, their office staff. It's not their, their patrol officers are with Teamsters. So it would just be a portion of their population there.
It'd be a few people, wouldn't it?
Maybe about half a dozen. So the, the numbers that we presented are really too high for their, what they think they can pencil with. As we kind of alluded to today and as, as we've discussed earlier with the Budget Committee, that the balance in the Health Benefit Trust Fund is likely higher than it needs to be. That it's been our discussion, our goal to bring that number down to something that, a policy level that, that you all are comfortable with, you know, whether that's six months of claims, which should be about half of what it is now, about six, seven, eight million as opposed to the 16 it is now. So if, if, in terms of Black Butte Ranch, bring it back there. If, if that's the level that's, we think it should be, then their buying is about half that also. So it's kind of an issue of timing here. If, and they're, they're beginning to put their budget together for next year. If you're comfortable with, say, offering a buy-in amount that's equitable to something, to a Health Benefits Trust Fund amount that's, that's much lower, then we can pursue those discussions with them. In the meantime, if you're not comfortable sort of presupposing that they, that the HBT fund level is going to come down a lot, then we'll simply defer our discussions with Black Butte until after that decision is made, which could be, you know, say even six months related to our budget hearing. So that's just kind of, I just wanted to get a sense of timing from you. We're not, I'm not presenting any final numbers for a decision, but just to get a sense of direction for me in my discussions with Black Butte.
So when you discussed it, I mean, it wasn't there, or wasn't that, what was your thought about the precedence of this? If, if Black Butte wants it, does that mean Sun River could do it? Does that mean, was you, extension could do it? Is, I mean, what's been the, right now it's just the county and COIC, is that correct? And in which we've talked, it's, we think it's a good program, but not really promoting it to all these other agencies, so.
No, and we didn't promote it to Black Butte. They, they asked us to join. And Black Butte and Sun River, and that's a great point, are two special service districts over which you are the governing board. So you can certainly draw a box around them as really the limit of what you may entertain for potential.
Yeah, that's a good point. So you discussed that at that meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any concerns about that, about other?
So just, yeah, that's exactly the concern. You know, it's like, it's, it's a system that was put in place many years ago. It's grown into itself. We're having positive claim benefits for the, you know, the cost of healthcare internally. The reserve has gone up. 10 years ago, this was the discussion, you know, how, how did it get so big? Which is the first time maybe it was discussed, you know, it was brought out publicly to say, hey, why is it so big? But that is at a time when the health plans were going up drastically and very dynamic. So it was almost, you know, it was a good spot to be again financially, but it was very disturbing or dynamic time. We didn't know if it was going to be the right thing to do. So, yeah, putting a box around it's very important at this point in time and being able to know what that really means, you know.
Does it benefit, I mean, it seems like the plan's big enough to support the county and COIC with things we do like the doc and pharmacy and the clinic. Is there a, is there a point where it gets too big or has there been, I mean, I don't know anything about the history of self-insured organizations, but?
Well, and that's a good question. Kathleen could certainly answer that much better than I could. We could, we could bring this back for more in-depth discussion. I mean, in general, we're just fine now. And, and the numbers that Black Butte would bring in are so small that it, it really, yeah, wouldn't make a material difference one way or the other.
So what year did it actually start, Tom?
Oh, boy, it was long before I became administrator, I want to say in the 08, 09 timeframe.
2008, 09?
Yeah, it's been around.
That's when it's, the self-insure started.
Maybe even a few years before that. It could have been, yeah.
Well, I don't have any real objections to it. I mean, did you, did you guys have an objection to it or did you think it's? Well, I don't have any real objections to it. I mean, did you, did you guys have an objection to it or did you think it's?
No, I mean, but look at that. If it really only started in two thousand and eight and we've accumulated sixteen million dollars in that reserve fund in ten years, does that not show you why?
We should maybe just get a one page of the history of the program and, you know, maybe the trajectory of those dollars and relative to cost increases, you know, then we would have a full set of information. Yeah, I mean, we want to help our public agencies, which we happen to be governing body of too. You know, it's a choice by the Blackbeet Ranch to have this service, which is a service for their ownership and, you know, tourists, vacationers.
Well, and, and that's fine. And I think what I do then is probably, I'll put this on as a regular discussion item in one of our Monday meetings. And we could also do some modeling on what the buy-in would look like under different assumptions associated with HBT fund.
Okay, sounds good. And then, you know, this is the public meeting, but let's have that discussion about what the box looks like as in, you know, what, how do we justify adding to and what's the appropriate, you know, just controls over its system.
Okay. Sounds, sounds good. Other comments? Okay, well, it's a few minutes before twelve. Do we need to take a break or can we just go forward with the refinement plan follow-up?
Proceed.
Okay. So the next item, number eight, is the Terrebonne Refinement Plan follow-up. And as you know, we discussed this last week about responding, doing two things. It wasn't just responding to the letter from ODOT, but it was also trying to finalize what our position is going forward. So it's, so that was, I mean, I, this has been kind of couched, I noticed in the article of the paper today that it was couched as just a response to their letter. It really is a decision by our body as to which direction we want to go. I mean, also, so I think it's both. And then we've had a letter drafted here today, or presentation today. And then we'd had a letter from Phil Grillo in behalf, who was attorney, who was involved in a lot of the meetings and was attorney for Jeff Jordan about some, another issue that we didn't really cover last week when we were kind of giving directions. I had a couple of simple changes on this, but I think the issue is whether we include anything about, apparently our TSP now, our transportation plan, has a provision that it could go towards a couplet, but it doesn't have a provision that it could, the future, if we added lanes, could be a five lane. And so the question is, do we address that in our letter? There were some other suggestions of things to address also. So have you, have you both had a chance to look at Mr. Grillo's letter and, and look at the letter that was prepared by staff and departments? So thoughts?
So my understanding, just in, in concept of the transportation system plan and our paragraph in the middle there, you know, it's the statement of not widening ninety-seven to those five lanes. Sounds like that was the past. You know, that was kind of the community feel was, well, let's not make a, you know, two traff, two lanes in each direction and a turn lane at ninety-seven. So then by default, that kind of gives the opening to, okay, what does a couplet look like? So I'm just acknowledging that that was the, the community process years ago and we do plan on doing that in the future. You know, what is the TSP Terrebonne Refinement Plan, you know, the gateway of the northern edge of the county look like into the future? However, if we want to change the words or not, I don't know.
Commissioner Deere, thoughts, comments?
I did talk to Mr. Farnsworth this morning and he's available if we need to talk to him today. I had a conversation with the Millers that live off of Tenth, it's called Tenth Street. And it was another issue in Terrebonne. And they said sometimes they could, there's, it's like why they're going to, they want to close Lafayette and Hawthorne because there's no merging capacity. Well, they said they would love it in this plan if some kind of a merge could come off of Tenth for them to go southbound.
That's the south side of town? Is that what that is?
Right. And they said they could sit there for fifteen minutes in the morning because it's so busy going southbound. So they have no capacity. So that's like something, you know, we need to have a pretty open discussion about making sure that it covers a few simple things. But I do have Mr. Grillo's letter and definitely appropriate signage from Smith Rock, what I'm thinking, to the interchange would be extremely helpful. And when you look at the numbers, the fact that the numbers in Terrebonne, what, what did they do? They doubled the numbers in Le Pine. So, you know, Terrebonne needs as much help as possible in order to smooth the traffic.
So good initial comments. I guess the question is, do we want, or the specific questions are, do we want them? We've been asked to put something in this letter that we have a draft of from staff and legal about the fact that, you know, are we committed to both options going forward, a couplet or, I mean, not committed to them, committed to keeping the doors open to both the couplet or a five lane or for future discussion? Because apparently the, the TSP does not allow a five lane now, so that would have to be amended, as, as I understand it. So I'm in favor of having it because I've always, my entire issue has been the fact that, you know, it started out a very, it was a very lengthy process, a lot of citizen input, but from my, and I was on the refinement committee. But from my perspective, it didn't, it was very clear that everybody wanted the interchange, but it was also very clear that there was an agreement on the two forms of expansion of the, of number of lanes. So I, my position is that I'd like to see if that can continue to be worked on as if we want to expand how it's done. There are people that want us to shut the door on the couplet currently. And then there's people that want us to proceed with the couplet. But there's also people, you know, want the five lane. So I, I'm good with having both. I'd, I'd like the letter to actually state that we remain open to either option and the necessary transportation plan amendments when the time comes or whatever. Something saying what our position is about expansion, because I don't, I don't want to be pushed into a corner where people say, oh, you're against any expansion. I'm, I'm personally not. I'm, it's just, I want something that, that works well for that community and for the people that live there and are invested there and have businesses and use the roads a lot locally. So, but I want, so I'm open to, I guess, for another day is what I want to basically say. But I want to, I don't want to, right now it's kind of prejudiced towards the couplet. And there may be people that want to see that, but the transportation plan, I don't want it to be that way. So that's, that's what I'm saying. And so I guess we, we need to decide if one of the other of you want to do that. That's.
So the TSP, Deschutes County's Transportation System Plan is going to be a process in the future. Is that, would you be leading that, Peter? Or, yeah, so please, yeah, if you could. So my point is, there was an application to amend the TSP, which didn't get acted on by ODOT. And now we have a TSP planning effort that's on the horizon. And I'm assuming that when a TSP is open, anything's possible.
Peter Russell, Senior Transportation Planner. If you want, I've got copies of the relevant TSP language highlighted if the board wants that.
Yeah, can we have that? That'd be great. Okay, so this is the letter that Legals developed and with staff.
So that's a draft letter at this point, just a proposed draft.
Did you just have, did you spread yourself?
Yeah, I did. David sent that to us. So, yeah, go ahead and read it. It's, it's, yeah, you can take some time and read that.
Sure. Thanks, Tom.
We just need one of these pages?
Yeah, there's, there's two citations. It's a double sided page. So in answer to Commissioner DeBonne's question, the road department will work on a request for proposals for the TSP. Then with the assistance of planning, we'll go through a public process, just as we did with the previous TSP in ninety-eight and the one in twenty-twelve. And so if the board or other folk want to remove the text language that you have in front of you about not adding lanes to US ninety-seven, then that would, that could be a proposal. And then the TSP goes through the Planning Commission review. They make a recommendation to the board and the board holds a public hearing. So that's a county-initiated TSP update. If a person wanted to take this lang, just this language out, they could come to the front counter of planning and pay their six thousand dollars or so for a text amendment and again, propose a text amendment, removing the language here or modifying it. And it would go the same process. Public hearings for the Planning Commission and then up to the Board of County Commissioners, but.
And the board could also initiate that, right?
Right, that was my first, my first one was like.
But I mean, we don't, that's the whole transportation. We're doing this big review, but we could singularly look at this issue if we wanted to. We could.
You could direct staff to that, yes.
Add amendment to this one issue if we wanted to. And that, and there's been people that have advocated for that after the meeting last week, that said, we ought to amend the plan now. And I, I don't, I'm not prepared to suggest we should do that, but I do want it, I'm just saying I want it in the letter that that's a possibility or that, both are possibilities. I think what the thing is, the issue here is that it says they're, they're ruling out nothing beyond a three lane. Well, there's a little trick in that, is that three lane, that means, that might have meant they didn't, just didn't want to go wider then. But you could be, do still a couplet because you've separated. There's more, only three, two lanes here and two lanes here. So that's why people that don't want the couplet are saying, this doesn't really allow a five lane, but it does allow a two lane or to a couplet with two lanes going each way. So that's, that would be the reason this doesn't match, give both an opportunity. So, right, is that, that's correct, isn't it?
Correct. Because back in, when we did the public hearings of the Terrebonne community, the sentiment of the community at that time was we don't want a five lane facility within our community. And so that's why a five lane isn't on there. A three lane is basically travel lane in each direction, then a two-way turn, left turn lane in the middle. So the community was fine with a couplet, a bypass.
Wait, 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 wait. Was the couplet even brought up at the time of the last plan?
Yes, that's, that's why it's in both the TSP and in the Terrebonne Community Plan. They were given a.
Where does it say couplet here?
So if you look on page one forty-two, and you say the second paragraph, "As the open houses, there was no strong preference among the options of a bypass, a couplet, Eleventh Street would be northbound, current US ninety-seven would be southbound, an interchange or overpass or a traffic signal." And then if you go to page, flip it over on one sixty-five. Third paragraph, kind of about midway, "Improvements to US ninety-seven in the Terrebonne area will focus on non-widening options such as access management, a couplet, traffic signals or a bypass." So the couplet was explicitly identified in both the Terrebonne Community Plan and in the Transportation System Plan.
Even more than that.
And that's, and that's what the, the ODOT application that was before you was specifically for a couplet. And even their own application materials said if they had gone with a five lane as the preferred alternative, which they didn't, it would require a plan amendment to the TSP. But what was before you was, the preferred alternative was a couplet, not, not a five lane or modifying any language about a five lane.
At the page before, on one forty-two, it says, residents generally prefer no change, so.
And this is from two thousand and two or twelve, excuse me?
Yeah, this is from our current Transportation System Plan. So there was a, you know, it took us about two thousand nine to twenty-twelve to get it all done. We had several open houses in Terrebonne. There was also a Terrebonne Community Plan specific to that area that we went through as well.
You said the previous version was nineteen ninety-eight, was the last time it was published? So then this is fourteen years later. It's just, and it took three years to do it. So two thousand nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Well, and so there's a TSP on the horizon, I guess, a TSP update.
Correct. The intent right now, as with the road department's funding, we would be looking at updating the TSP. First, it'd be a request for proposals so consultants could bid on it. Then kind of view, see what they think we might need to update in our Transportation System Plan. And then we'd go through a public process in front of the Planning Commission, the board again.
What kind of timeframe on that? Or is that, that's up to us or us as an entity to make the decision?
Typically, TSP updates take between eighteen to twenty-four months, depending on how complex you want to get.
And if it was published in two thousand and twelve, what's the appropriate, expected kind of industry standard for when you would want to have a new published?
Part of it depends on what your traffic is. So if you're in Wheeler County, you're probably good for, you know, nineteen years on your TSP. Here, you want to update it a little, no offense to Wheeler County, but here, you're probably going to update it. We're looking like every, like you get midway through your cycle, you start looking, see other crash patterns or their volume changes.
What's the cycle you were?
So it's a twenty-year plan. So usually when you get about that, you start creeping into that ten-year window. You start looking at, do we need to update it or not?
So when you say we're going to start doing this, have we already set up kind of a schedule of hearings and things or?
No.
What's, do you know when we're going to start the process?
I have to work with Chris on that in terms of first to get out the proposal and then, you know, see who bids on it, score those, and then when you want to have your start date. But it's probably going to be, I sense movement.
I'd add a little clarity to that.
So board, we've drafted a draft, a request for proposals document. We'll probably be issuing that once it's been through review of stakeholders sometime in January. And like Peter said, it could be, you know, that eighteen month timeframe in terms of. Yes, a request for proposal to select a consultant to then.
Killman or somebody like that?
Killson or several others to then, they go through a series of modeling and kind of projecting what the future traffic volumes will be on various county facilities. And then, as Peter mentioned, it'll be a rigorous public process to where we're out in all the various communities in Deschutes County getting input and also involving an advisory committee as well. It'd be a pretty, pretty standard process.
So look, when you read this whole paragraph, the second one on one forty-three, it's, there's a lot to it. I mean, it's, you know, what the plan was back in two thousand and twelve, there's, what the, it's going to remain a three lane because there's residential on both sides, which that can be, I mean, some of that's true of a couplet also. But then it says the main goal is not traffic movements. It's calming and pedestrian safety. So, so the emphasis in non-widening options. So like, yeah, I just, I feel it's important as, you know, at this time and place, Commissioners say, because it's been worked on for so long and it's been talked about by so many, that we should say what our position is for now. That doesn't necessarily mean we can't change our position when we do the TSP amendments. It doesn't mean, couldn't do our own thing sometime. It doesn't mean that the, ODOT, if they have more money, couldn't do something differently. So I, that's what I'd like to do is I'd like to put something in the letter along the line of what Mr. Grillo would suggest to represent the people that would want to go a different direction than the couplet if they, if that comes up. And so they're, that's an option. They're on equal footing. I guess that's, that's just us saying what we think. That isn't a change of the plan. So I guess the question is whether either of you would want to do that now.
Well, remember my whole direction. I, I was thinking we were going is, you know, biting the bullet, committing to this couplet and managing the impacts of the community with partnership and spending, you know, capital improvement dollars off of the ninety-seven system. So, you know, if we're seeing it differently, you know, that's where we're at.
So you're saying you don't want to put anything in the letter about the five lane being still a possibility?
I support the fact that that's going to be the TSP discussion in the next few years, so I don't support it at this time.
Have you had a chance to read the letter that staff wrote and?
Right, I read it. I had read it on my phone, which wasn't good. So Peter, you're saying from the consensus in two thousand and twelve, they didn't want the five lane then?
Correct.
Even though that was one of the two options we were presented with when they started doing their presentations in eighteen?
Correct. So ODOT was kind of between a rock and a hard place. They knew that a five lane would require a plan amendment just to demonstrate to the community, you know, how it'd work if you went with a five lane, you know, irrespective of what land use.
But also required a plan amendment though, didn't it?
A minor. You just had to re-designate Eleventh Street as a state highway, but that was, that was all you're going to do for the, you know, the land.
We had to move, they wanted to move, change that farmland and, right, that, where they're going to do that.
Yeah, they, they had some, yeah, they were building across a very small sliver of EFU, but I think they're allowed to do that. So the, the main thing was to designate Eleventh Street as a state highway and there'd be a jurisdictional exchange between the county and. a jurisdictional exchange between the county and the Oregon Department of Transportation. And so, just to kind of give you a, you know, more background on the last TSP, because two of the three of you here weren't, weren't here for that, we basically had three rounds of public meetings in Hampton, Sisters, Lapine, Redmond, Terrebonne, Bend area where we had a kickoff meeting saying, I'm boiling, boiling this down obviously, hey, we're having a kickoff, here's what a TSP is, tell us what your issues are, got a roster of those, worked with ODOT, did some modeling, said here are some preliminary, went back for a second round of meetings in all those locations and said, we've heard you, here's what we're doing about your issues, here's what the modeling shows, here's some proposed improvements, and then went back for a third time and said, you know, here's the final draft document and when there'll be hearings before the planning commission and the board. So we basically tried to reach out to the community constantly, it wasn't a one-and-done kind of meeting. At the same time, when we were wrapping up the TSP, we were also doing the Terrebonne and Tumalo community plans.
Okay, thanks for the background on that. So, still the same question, I guess, Commissioner Dare.
Mm-hmm.
I'm specifically looking at item number four on the-
Right.
-Grillo letter.
Well, interesting, that was in 12, you're saying, and nothing was really done for seven years then. So now hopefully, we're going to be doing something that's going to be implemented in 21.
We'll start in-
I mean, with the interchange.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's taken quite a while. So, you know, it's just, it's important that we keep the community together and, I don't know, I don't know, I guess I'd want legal to look at that and see that, where would that fit in to their original letter?
So, Dave, you feel comfortable talking about this? I mean, it's a legal document, but it's public, it's going to be public when it's done.
Certainly as a matter of procedure, I mean, I think you need to recognize, or we all need to recall that we had the, the one proceeding that in essence is stalled, and that's the application from ODOT for an amendment to the TSP with the preferred option being the couplet. That's kind of in a stalled holding pattern and staff assumes we're waiting for a, a letter or some formal notification from ODOT that would draw that application because it didn't go anywhere. And then in the middle is what you have now, which is this letter of support, which is ODOT has said, well, here's some options, what are you thinking you can support, or would you support? That's outside of the existing TSP application. It certainly, one could argue related, but it's not part of that process. And then the long-term process that Peter was talking about, which is the, the legislative change to the TSP that would be generated in the next handful of years is part of that normal process. So, what you're being asked to do now, my understanding is, is to simply provide a letter of support to give some direction to ODOT and your road department and CDD planning folks as they go forward with whatever it is they're going to be doing there. So, I think the letter can kind of read however you want, I, I look at it more as an advisory, this is sort of what we're feeling, recognizing it's outside of the formality of any TSP process, or any type of comp plan amendment, or anything that is involved in that context, and, and they're soliciting your, your advice and, and what it is you'd be supportive of as the governing body of, of the county. I don't know if, if Chris or Peter have a different assessment, but, so, I think in response to Commissioner's question, yeah, I mean, we could blend any, any language you, you want in the, the letter, I think it's important for folks to recognize, I don't believe it in any way binds the board moving forward with a future TSP process. And if someone shows up and waves the letter and says, but you said, certainly if I'm here, I'm going to say, well, that was an advisory, hey, this is what we sort of feel and hope it works, but it's in no way binding a future board of commissioners through a formal TSP amendment process.
But it, yeah, and the affirmative sense, it's saying that at least this board has, is open to, you know, to two alternatives, not just one. I mean, I've felt, you know, all along, it started out, we were going to, we were discussing two options, the couplet and the five lane, but by the time we were done, the five lane was financially prohibitive, it was twice what it started at, it was 40 millions to 20. There's been this assumption, well, you're, you're not going to spend all the money, you're going to lose it. Well, we're going to spend all the money, we're going to spend on the interchange and other improvements, so I want to just get it out there that one chapter's, or maybe it's one part of the chapter's closed, another chapter, another part of it's still open, or one chapter's closed and the second chapter's still open, but I, because there's, we've gotten a lot of publicity and comments, and I want people to be understanding of what we're saying. I guess that's my goal in having this, having the language in about both options still being on the table, at least from our perspective, and we didn't, we're just choosing not to, we're not choosing to do away with what the original money was for, we're just saying we're not convinced on the, on the couplet being something that the community wants or should, we should spend the money on right now, that's all.
So a, a simple letter from the board of commissioners could state, you know, we're enthusiastic to invest in lower bridge option two and support partnership for lower speeds and access and circulation in your town. I mean, you know, done, which is the first paragraph?
Well, I, I actually like the letter as it's written. And, um, I missed option two, um, I think we need to see what happens when, after the interchange is done, and so, is the five lane going to be needed because we're that much busy there? You know, would-
Yeah, and there's, for a long time, we'll be-
Right.
-keeping an eye on it and making improvements and, you know, doing the best we can, and if there's ever, you know, a crash day to, God forbid, you know, bad situations, that's going to pop up to a high list of improvements, you know, bad crashes.
I mean, somewhere you could add five lane in there, or the, you know, I'm not quite sure where it fits, that either the couplet or the five lane, you know, I don't want to stop future.
Well, I mean, another way to proceed, maybe this is what you're trying to get to, is the fact that there's a long history of the discussion about a five lane or a couplet, and, and just like I said in my opening statement for an emotion, you know, like, there's, there's a sense of community there that's, that's being affected by the traffic, and, you know, we'd love to be able to save that, but those 17,000 trips a day really change the environment. You know, so I'm saying there's, there's a positive statement in there possibly, acknowledging the tension of making a decision.
So Commissioner Henderson, were you talking about adding the entire, entirety of that point number four?
Um, well, that's what's been offered, I haven't really looked at, I'm sure there's a way we could shorten it, or it probably covers more than we need to have. Part of the stuff about moving forward in good faith and consensus is kind of a philosophical point of what are the, you know, what are the commissioners working on, what the people, at least some people in the community want us to say.
Commissioners, if I could, what about a, just a sentence at the end that you'd be interested in all future options for improving traffic through Terrebonne?
I mean, maybe it's just, I think rather than saying all, I mean, there's only two that really have come, I mean, well, the third would be a bypass if they had, you know, more money. Yeah, I just think they should all be, I think ODOT and our departments should be open to, you know, discussions of that if, if, rather than, so it could be a single sentence, I guess, in that sense.
No, I'm comfortable with that because we may get to the point where, you know, it's a bypass.
We could do a biaduct or a tunnel like in Seattle, too.
Oh, and we do want to thank you, Chris. The comments from Sun River were excellent about Harper Bridge and what a great job you did.
Yeah.
So I don't know if someone told you that, but that was feedback on Thursday.
From a different meeting.
Nice job in Sun River.
Thank you.
No, I, I, I can agree with all of them.
Well, we could come up with a third, I mean, we could come up with an additional sentence that would go in, could also go in at the end of the second paragraph for the, probably in the third paragraph, too. Do you have one other little change to that, probably after the, it could go in the second? It's really, I mean, it was a simple, the concept is, in the event they, you know, we get to a point where we're considering not, or widening options, because we've said they're focusing on non-widening options, then, then all possibilities should be considered or something, is that what you're talking about, something like that? Do you want to come up with something, Dave? I'll talk about one other thing while you're doing that. So in the third paragraph, it's, it says, "In considering and evaluating alternative ramp configured at the last end, to optimize overall traffic flow and safety, for example, the southbound off-ramp," I want it to say and include the southbound off-ramp, because that's, as I've said numerous times, I like the idea of the southbound off-ramp rather than using that circle, and, so that would be my recommendation, I don't know if either of you feel that way, that there should be a southbound off-ramp, but if we feel that way, we should, don't have to be-
Yes, I know they're currently looking into that, and I do think it's important that, yes, they should just build a get-off and go on to lower bridge.
And we can say that if we want in the letter, that from our perspective, we want to have an off-ramp, because we do have the additional money beyond the interchange as it's currently set up, so I'd rather be more strong than just for example.
Okay, I can agree with that.
And include, I mean, and then in the second paragraph, I was just going to add a word, therefore, option two is consistent with the current TSP as opposed to the TSP, just so that we know it's, because it, I just, that's just technical.
So question, southbound off-ramp, are you referring to into this exist, this proposed circle over here?
Yeah, well, just, yeah, just when you're coming from Madras Way, you just turn right off on to lower bridge as opposed to go through the circle.
So I'd be hesitant to put a specific design suggestion in there, knowing that there's other factors, like just how many decisions does a driver need to make as they're coming to each point in that, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but there's reasons, so I, I mean, I'd be hesitant to mandate a turn lane somewhere in a letter like this.
If I could, board.
Yeah.
Well, we will have another opportunity through the intergovernmental agreement that the county will enter with ODOT to probably address this exact issue with more information that ODOT will provide in terms of cost, the right-of-way that would need to be acquired at that corner is probably the biggest portion.
Yeah, and that's, I've heard that for a year, you know, that they can't, well, why is that right-of-way harder than all the other right-of-ways we're having to accumulate or, you know, buy? And I guess the other concern I have is that I'm thinking of myself as a driver and having worked in these circles, and I don't think, I just am pretty confident that people coming from Madras are going to, or from the north, they're not from Madras, but from Portland or wherever, they're going back to Cricketer Ranch, or they're going to Patty Lives or whatever, are not going to like going through that circle, and it's going to be one more thing that bogs it down. So I'm, I'm comfortable saying we should do it, and for, I'm just, and having been at the meet, the reasons I'm kind of pushing it is because in the reasons in the meetings there, it's been brought up, there's all these challenges and I don't really get them, so I guess that's why I'd like it being there, and if Commissioner Dare's in favor of that too, we can do that. So, okay, Dave, did you come up with something?
I'm not totally sure, I was going to hope I get maybe a, a break and work with Peter and, and Chris on that, I'm not exactly sure I'm capturing what it is you folks.
Well, really, I mean, all respect to Peter and Chris, this is really our statement of what we want, which disagrees with what they want, so what do you have?
I don't have anything, I'm not sure what it is you want, somewhere in there you want, I think paragraph four from Mr. Grillo's letter synthesized and put in here, and I wasn't sure, there was some talk about putting it at the end of the last paragraph, and then there was some talk about perhaps putting it at the end of the second paragraph. I could paraphrase what's written there and try to put that into the letter, we could certainly do that, come back a little bit later, we could bring it-
How about this, on that first sentence, "The board's intent is that in the, in the event of further widening considerations, all options, including the couplet, and the five, the five lane and the bypass for 97, should move forward in good faith or further discussion and analysis in attempt to reach a consensus." Could you live with that?
I could live with that. So Chris, where we currently come southbound on 97 and we make the turn, you know, and go immediately on lower bridge, is the interchange, the way it's at now, it looks like it's going to be right in that same, like, right where the road is currently, and the circle's going to go a little bit south with, from the road south?
Correct.
So if we actually made a smooth turn there to keep that, what Commissioner Henderson is talking about, we're talking about a lot of property, I believe, that's private, is it not?
Yeah, so the, the property at the, would be the northeast-
I'm looking where the road is and-
The northeast corner of the intersection would need to be acquired to, for that, and that's not a, a challenge as much as it's just an added cost and-
And because we, and we have the underpass there, too, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, what I'm really just talking about is just having an off-ramp that goes into there.
I know, I think, I think that's, okay, well, I think it's a cost, have to look and see what is the cost.
And Chris said we can do that during the governmental agreement, right?
Okay, that would be great, because otherwise you'd have to go way past it, come back around, and then head up. What is that, 100 feet or 200 feet or something?
There's, there's grades involved.
Right.
ODOT's got to, got to figure out how that would look and, and what type of property acquisition would be necessary to make that work, but it, it would possibly eliminate the, the roundabout, as Commissioner Henderson's noted.
Okay, I know, like, Murphy Road seems rather confusing down there.
That's exactly what-
Yes.
-I'm saying, yeah.
I mean, you know, when you drive it, so, I don't want another, I don't want a Murphy Road.
So here's, this is my, it's not perfect, but, "The board's intent is that in the event further consideration is made of widening Highway 97, all options including bypass, couplet, or five lane alignment of Highway 97 through Terrebonne should move forward in good faith for further discussion and analysis in attempt to reach a consensus." What does that sound?
That sounds good, because we're, we're still looking ahead.
Would that be added to the, at the end of the last paragraph, is that where you wanted it?
Yeah, I think that's good, I mean, it could go there, it could also- Or it could go at the end of the second paragraph also, I mean, I don't, I don't really, it might fit in better at the second because we're talking about, we just have talked about non-widening, and then, so then we say, well, if we'd considered widening, okay, well-
Okay, so in that paragraph, we'll indicate current TSP, we can add the paragraph, the sentence you just read into the record at the end of that second- We can add the paragraph, the sentence you just read into the record, at the end of that second paragraph. Was it a consensus, or at, at least a majority on changing, "For example," and just stating "and"?
And include.
So, the "and" the southbound off-ramp?
Well, it is going to be, it, it would be recommended that we would do that, but then it, we'll have to look at what happens when the costs come in, you know?
So, if, you know, if that's, so then we should probably just leave it the way it is?
Yeah, I think we should leave it the way it is, just because.
You're not, you're not as strong on it as I probably am, so that sounds, that's fine.
Okay, I mean, it's, ideally, I would like it, but financially, it might be like a $6 million.
It's not $6 million to build an off-ramp, I'm sorry.
No, 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 but I mean, but to buy the land, and everything, you know.
And I support looking at that option.
Yeah.
I just am worried that we won't get a chance to look at the option, and, so that's why I wanted to say it here, that that's what I like, because, but that's, you know. But it's not $6 million to build an off-ramp, it's.
I think ODOT's hearing you loud and clear.
Well, I just wanted to, and it's, you know, it's a weighing of what is the majority or consensus out here, so.
Yes.
But.
I would love to see that. I do not want to see another Murphy, where you kind of drive around down there, and.
Trying to figure out where you're supposed to go next.
Yeah, I'm like, oh, really?
Commissioners, if we could get a minute, motion to approve the letter with those changes, we can get those put together and grab your signatures before anyone heads out today, and see that it's in the mail this afternoon.
So, we'd seek a.
I make a motion to accept the letter with the current changes as proposed, for the interchange serving a US 97 and Lower Bridge Way.
I'll second it. Further comments? Thank you for the time to go through that, clarify that. That's the other thing I should ask, is there anything else in the Grillo letter? Commissioner Dare, that one, two, or three, that you, I guess we didn't talk about that. Yeah, I know you'd like number two, include appropriate signage, had been something we'd talked about. I like number three. Move the design of the southbound exit ramp. Oh, that's the same, we've been talking, we were shared to a standard exit. Yeah, that's what we just talked about. So, we could include the concepts of two and three. We'd be amending the letter, we just, we haven't voted on it yet, have we? So, I just brought that up, because I'd forgotten about those things.
I mean, I think the signage is automatically going to follow, because it is part of both sides of 97, the west side and the east side now can both go down. I mean, that's what the whole goal is, they can go down to the interchange, and then not take their life in their own hands by making a turn across traffic. So, it's critical to have that, the sign, I mean, I can't imagine that the signage would not be one of the first things they would do.
I think one of the big aspects of this project will be, you know, with remaining funds, and possibly with county investment, what we do with 11th Street, how much we can improve it, what it's going to look like, in terms of a facility and signage, you know, will be a big part of that. So, and those are details, again, that we'll, we'll flesh out and then, and work through, such that when you do have an intergovernmental agreement with ODOT, eventually, it will, you'll know exactly the type of project that we're getting here.
So, all those details go in the intergovernmental agreement?
They, they can, and we'll be that much further along in the process to know, you know, in addition to the, the southbound exit, we've talked about what other parts of, you know, the, the $20 million can be invested. And I think that's the, that will be what we go about working on, once we, ODOT has this direction that they've asked the Board for, is, okay, we're going with option two. It's a 12, $14 million project. We want to spend the $20 million in Terrebonne, I think everybody understands that. And, and now it's a matter of what other priorities, and we want to invest the remaining funds in, and/or contribute additional county dollars. Because this project is, you know, requires that, that strong collector-type 11th Street, to make that connection, to provide that, that, that option, as Commissioner Dare just noted for people.
I think the reason that signage had come in, come up, is it hadn't been talked about that much. I know Commissioner Dare had asked about just generally Smith Rock traffic, and.
Yeah, we have.
The specific call-out was really, that was why it was there. It may be obvious, but it hasn't been, or, I mean, I actually think it's kind of smarter if you're trying to get on Highway 97 now, is to go down further.
Big right, go left.
Go left, yeah, so, but there isn't signs that say that. When you get to 11th Street now, I don't think it says.
No.
Easiest way to Smith Rock, or 97 going south is drive up here ways.
Additionally, there's, there's signage that, that now that we have this direction, that, you know, we can put on our system to direct Smith Rock-specific traffic to First Street, and out Fifth, out to the O'Neill Highway, and, and onto the, ultimately, North Canal Boulevard, and the, and the interchange for Redmond's reroute, without touching the state highway. So, wayfinding will be a big part of this project, given the fact that, that, you know, we're really not touching 97 in the Smith Rock Way area, but finding other ways for people to get on the highway, be it 11th or another route.
It doesn't sound like we would need to have that in this letter necessarily. So, I know there's support for a Citizens Advisory Committee, Terrebonne Citizens Advisory Committee. What do you think about adding that, Commissioner Dare?
I know we had mentioned it last week, to continue bringing the community together.
What if we added that to the last paragraph? So, we'd be amending the, the letter one more, that. So, we could do something almost like it says, "To achieve this end," or something. We support establishing, and then just use number three?
Right.
Because would that, that would work there, I think.
Well, let's discuss that, then.
Yeah, we will, I'm just.
Whose committee would that be?
And. This, and.
Who's committee would that be?
Are we asking ODOT to create that committee?
Hold on just a second. Okay, so that would, yeah, so I'd propose, so, yeah, I guess that, it seems like they're the organizing entity here more than, I mean, the county could do it, but I think we're, it seems like it would be in ODOT. This is saying what we support, is having ODOT, we could put that in there, to have ODOT establish. Would you rather we did it?
Well, I, I don't know that, that that's an appropriate request. I mean, who are we asking to create this committee? If this is a letter to ODOT, are we asking them to have a standing committee, or is this a committee for one meeting? Or is there a decision to be made? Or, you know, I mean, it sounds like.
They'll figure that out.
Well, that's my point, it's not real clear.
Well, I mean, we can make it more clear. I mean, I don't know, I mean, I like the idea of a Citizens Advisory Committee to, to work on the future of the roads up there.
Well, so, ODOT is, you know, the Highway 97 is an ODOT facility, connectivity north and south throughout the state of Oregon. So, we have an advisory committee in, you know, a geographic area? Or one person from downtown Terrebonne, and one first person from Crooked River Ranch, and one person from the trucking industry? I mean, it just opens up all kinds of questions.
Well, that's what they'd answer, I guess. I mean, the first step is whether we want to initiate this kind of activity at all. And I guess we could work on the scoping of it. I have any answers. I mean, actually, the people he suggested would probably be good people to have on it, that's a good.
So, the flip side of that would be the day that, you know, the Terrebonne community votes to have a city, and a city council, and then the mayor can speak for the, for the downtown, or the, you know, local chamber of commerce. I'm just saying, there's, there's all kinds of ways this could go.
I agree with that.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I don't support saying, asking ODOT to start a committee. I mean, they had committee meetings, you know, community meetings on this topic many times already. And we're available, I mean, that's what we, this, this process.
Well, I guess I don't, well, what are your thoughts?
Well, when you look at ODOT's original analysis, there were 14 different stakeholders, and I can respect that, but I would think that perhaps the citizens of Terrebonne would want to form this committee on their own. You know, they, you know, there's people there that are very active, and I could see why, you know, it's in their best interest, and, you know, it would be, they could be, you know, funneling information to us. But I don't think that's an ODOT responsibility.
So, we could say, "To achieve this end, the Board supports local Terrebonne residents establishing a Terrebonne Citizens Advisory Committee." Is that what you're, is that, you like that idea?
Yes, I'm, it's, I don't think it's an ODOT responsibility, but yes. It, you know, it'd be something that we would, I would appreciate.
Yeah, because it, you know, I think my support of it is, is that, like I've said all along, I'd like something that, a solution that is well-supported in the community, and that would be what, when they get there. So, I, I'm fine with it being local citizens form a committee. I, I agree, we can't, this is not a, we're not really telling ODOT, or anybody, what to do. We're saying, it's supportive of an idea, so. So, do you want to say that? Are you good with that, if we said, "To achieve this end, the Board supports local citizens of Terrebonne establishing a Terrebonne Citizens Advisory Committee?" I can, okay, I can agree with that. So, would that go, I would think, go at the, at the end of the last paragraph, or are you, is that fine with you? Okay. So, I would move that we amend your motion to include the language, the end of the last paragraph, "To achieve this end, the Board supports local Terrebonne citizens establishing a Terrebonne Citizens Advisory Committee." Should we put in who will be affect, directly affected by the project? I mean, if it's going to be local citizens, it, I'm assuming it'll have business and property owners. Establishing is the Terrebonne Citizens Advisory Committee. A persons who will be directly affected by the project? Is that fine, or?
That's okay, keep it, right, because if we're, if Commissioner DeBonne is driving in and out, and that's his route every day, he could be someone that could be part of that, even though his business isn't there.
Well, I guess.
I mean, this way, you're saying that only the people that are business and property owners are going to be part of that committee? But I think it should have a wider range than that.
"To achieve this end, the Board supports local Terrebonne citizens establishing a Terrebonne Citizens Advisory Committee." A persons affected by the project, or just a per, well, it's obvious it's a person, so we don't need that. We can just stop at where it was. Is that what you're saying?
Right.
Okay. All right, so I move we amend it to include those, those words as discussed. Do you want to second that?
I will second the amendment.
Okay. And then we'll, then, do we need to re, or can we just now vote on the?
You can vote on it, we'll make the changes and get your signature, yeah.
So, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
No.
And Chair votes yes. I think that concludes our letter, which was kind of our answer to where we are, I guess, on the Terrebonne refinement plan, and the future of the project. So, do we need to do anything else?
I have clear direction, we'll put the letter together and get it to you folks. So, you're going to be around the next hour or so, the three of you? We'll get it, do you want it for Chair's signature, or all three Commissioners?
It can be all three, or what, you know, whatever.
Or two?
Yeah?
I, I mean, I'd support Chair's signature, if you want to keep it like that. I'll sign it if it's out there, too.
Thank you.
I'm, either way.
Well, Chair's signature.
It doesn't make much sense to have just Chair's signature.
I think we all, okay, I'm happy to sign it.
And, and since all three are, you're signed, do you want it to reflect that the, that it's by a two-to-one vote, the, the Board is providing this letter? Or are you comfortable without that not being in there, Commissioner DeBonne?
See, now, two-to-one, it'd be great.
We could certainly put that in there, we could make the letter reflect that, that the Commissioners, or, you know, after discussing and voting, voted two-to-one to, to submit this letter.
Because it's, there's a lot of components to it, I think.
We'll make sure of that.
Committee was the last one you.
Exactly.
Put out on, too much, okay.
We'll get that drafted into you soon.
Okay, all right. Thank you, anyone that's come for that matter today. Do we have anything else that we need to talk about now? I had a couple of meeting discussions, but, no, I guess we could put them off. Well, yeah, just under other items, but, I don't know if there's anything else you want to.
If there's anything you want to share, that's fine. This is it, end of the year.
That's true.
Because, yeah, I, yeah, it'll be two weeks before we.
Okay, so one, one meeting I went to after our last meeting was the Airport Committee on Thursday. And I guess we're not going to hit 1 million flights quite this month, it doesn't look like. But it'd be sometime in early January that we'd get to that millionth flight. But it's still a doubling of, of passengers.
Fifty-four week period.
Yeah, it's been a doubling of passengers in about five or six, five years, or something. And they have, be looking for a lot of improvements throughout the building, the snow removal improve, building, quick turnaround place for the rental cars is being put in, expanded parking. They're looking at terminal expansion, so, pretty interesting, the scope of what the, the airports seems to have funding, and the ability to do, and is planning, so.
So, that snow removal building, that was in a list of proposed Central Oregon projects for, you know, funds from the state, or something. I was involved in that, that, that prioritizing project. So, it just, it's fun to hear it come back three years later, the fact that it's going to be built.
Yeah, they're looking at some, some new equipment for that. It's pretty interesting what they, how they do it differently than roads. And then I had a kind of a brief explanation of how de-icing works, because when I'd been on a plane on Thanksgiving Day this year, they'd done the de-icing, and I've never sat there and wondered about, what are they de-icing?
I've seen that in Denver, I'm like, I sure hope it works well.
Well, it turns out it's done by the airlines. It's not done by a special, you know, person or something. or something, the airline people that work, like, the personnel that do baggage and check-in, get on this thing and load, it's interesting.
Yeah, what kind of chemicals are they spraying?
I don't know what the chemicals are, I, I'm just wank, you know, I just hope they're spraying it enough to cover everything, but, that was kind of, it's pretty, pretty interesting. Then I didn't know if maybe any comments about the Sun River Service District meeting? Thought it was a really good meeting, but, anything that came.
Sorry, I was late, just cutting it close, and the roads were real slow that morning from my end.
Yes, it was real slow for my end, too.
Oh, I know, well, and if we needed to be in Redmond at 7:00 a.m., I could have done it, but of course, the window's close to my house, I didn't leave in time. It was a good meeting.
It was an icy morning, and it was great hearing all the positive feedback about Harbor Bridge.
Yeah, that was really great.
So that was excellent.
I, I'm really interested in hearing a little more about the possibility of an evacuation drill, or whatever it is that they're thinking you're wanting to do, I, I don't know if you can do it in Sun River, but I, I have told you I was in the tsunami alarm in Hawaii when the, they had the tsunami coming in Japan, and it was very scary, and that was, you know, hours off, you knew it was coming, but what should you do, where should you go, how do you get there, and it was panicked by people being, and, so if I, I've never been in a fire evacuation, but.
I've been in quite a few.
Okay, well, you've been through it.
I have had my horses in the trailer, like Lotus.
But in a high tourism, I mean, it's one thing if you're, live there, because you kind of know where you're, but if you're a tourist doing this stuff, you have no, you don't know who to rely on, is what I found.
Right.
Because you're staying in condos or whatever with all these other people that don't know the area, and they're like, where do we go, and what do we do, and then everybody goes to the gas station to fill up with gas, because they're sure they're going to run out of gas, and, I don't know, I just thought it'd be, I don't know if we've ever had an evacuation drill out there, but it almost seems to me that the locals in Sun River should be kind of like the guides to everybody else, I don't.
Yeah, the good thing about Sun River is that the resort actually gives them the number to text when they check in, so they're part of the whole system on, you know, what you need to do, and I know that they were been outing that out at Blackview, because it's all those people that don't live there, and what do they do?
Yeah, well, have they ever done a drill out there?
Not that I'm aware of, and I know they're sensitive to their, their visitor population there, and that, sorry, Nathan Garabee has been working with both the chief and the fire department recently, over the last few months, to kind of explore what, what that might look like.
Oh, is it good?
When I talked to Nathan about that specifically, and he said that, yeah, Fire Chief, Chief Moore is the one that's the emergency manager, you know, so the, they all work together, but he's kind of the lead in Sun River, he's the emergency manager of Sun River, the fire chief is, so he'd be the one that would, you know, make the call, let's do the exercise on this date and how it would happen, so, because I researched that a little bit, too, I asked Nathan about that.
That's good, yeah.
But it was really amazing to think that Nathan, they didn't have a plan for Deschutes, River Woods, so like, this summer, I believe, they did not have an evacuation plan.
Really?
Yes, that's what it is.
Yeah, that was, I think, one of the things that came out of that paradise.
Yeah, I couldn't believe it.
That is amazing.
Because, you know, we, I went to Sundance with them, and with, with, you know, Cross, what, what is it? Anyway, up in Sisters, because we were looking at some of them, but yeah, yeah, so it was just like, oh my gosh.
Anything else?
My, my forest trip only cost me four hundred and twenty dollars for my new belts and my pickup, and it was something else entirely, anyway, so that was a really good thing.
Did you go to the Eastern Orange Counties thing yet?
Yes, I did, it was actually excellent, and Bobby was on the call.
Bobby Bruno from?
Because, as a favor, because I'd driven down there.
Oh, good.
He actually told Carl, that's why he was on the call, so now I'm supposed to go down and meet with him in person.
Good.
So, yeah, so it was, it was good, we made progress, and now they're having all the meetings in Le Grand. I said, oh, fabulous, now we have to drive up Cabbage Hill, which is, can be really dicey in the winter.
That's even farther.
I know, I know, I was not, I didn't think of, they said, yeah, they made some.
Next meeting scheduled?
Yeah, January twenty-eighth.
Maybe I can go to one of them.
January twenty-eighth, and that's, yeah.
It's a Tuesday.
Yes, it's a Tuesday.
At least it started in Bend.
Yes.
We got one or two, and they at least have met us.
Okay.
Is that, anything else? Oh, done, thank you.